All right. Good evening, good evening, good evening. We're glad you're here as always. We love to have participation from residents, so I'm glad you're here. Let me make some reminders. This is a formal city council meeting. So no electronics or cell phones are allowed. Please put your cell phones away at this time. They are for purposes explicitly authorized by Texas state law under government code section 551.023. Allowed only in that instance. Let me remind you that no personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. Also, there has been some confusion among residents lately. You have to make public comments in regards to something on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, according to Texas Open Meetings Act, you're not allowed to comment on that. So I want to make sure everybody is aware of that situation. All right, with that being said, call this meeting on the border, please stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic. When I think individual sovereignty and justice are all. Honored under Texas law, I would be just pleased and Texas, while I was paid, reminded of God. Thank you, may we see it? Okay, we have a forum present. All council members are here with Gary Johnson being on Zoom this evening. Gio, proof of notice of the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was put up by 2:00 PM on Friday, February 3rd.
Thank you. All right. Are there any public comments?
First up, we have JD Newsome.
Let me remind everyone once again, it must be an agenda. I don't think you're speaking on. Please come to the panel, state your name and ward.
Hi, my name is JD Newsome. I actually don't live in the city of Alpine. But I am the executive director with the Big Ben Regional Hospital District and board member of Alpine Community Projects. And I'm here to speak with you all today to urge you to support the tax credit application for Mountain View properties. Working with a lot of clients at the hospital district, Mountain View apartments had become, I've become very aware that there were a lot of issues at Mountain View in the quality of life and the condition of that apartment complex is very poor. When I found out that they were going to be applying for tax credits, I was a little bit skeptical about the owner's ability to use those tax credits appropriately. I did reach out and speak to the development group and came away with a much different perception of what they're trying to do. The owners of that property inherited, they bought that property in 2019, and this has been their plan to revitalize that project for some years. So they're doing the right thing. It's going to be a major investment of $5.3 million renovation for that apartment community. And I think it's going to be a really great thing for Alpine and a really great thing for those residents and you know, provide more affordable housing for Alpine. So I urge you guys to support that tax credit application. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, City Secretary, any other public comments?
We have Joy Kennely, Ward 1.
Okay, I'm going to pass.
Cynthia Salas, Ward 2.
Like the secretary said, I am Cynthia Salas from Ward 2, and I am going to discuss item 8, Section 2, in regards to the Skyway Garden Development. As all of us in this room, plus everyone sitting up there, knows that we have struggled with housing forever. And we have also struggled with infrastructure forever. But I remember back when Dr. Morgan was at the university and so was Dr. Miestas. They were housing students in hotel rooms because we didn't have housing to put the students in. So it's very important that we seriously consider this because we're going to lose students up at the university because there's nowhere where they could stay. And we're going to lose people that are coming here to either work at the schools or with the governments and don't have anywhere to stay. So I highly recommend that you seriously consider their proposal.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. Let's move on to the mayor report. So first, I want to express my gratitude to our community, to the residents in Alpine. You guys have shown up to the town hall meetings, you've been giving ideas, you have emailed us, you have told us a variety of different things, and we are doing some of the hard things. And also our 501(c)(3) is our nonprofits like Alpine Community Projects, the Alpine Business Alliance, the things that we are doing together, and then AISD with Dr. Michelle Reinhardt. It's just amazing. And so I believe that we can do the tough things when we all work together and we put our minds to it and we persist. And so I am forever grateful. So that goes along with perseverance. The status quo is not okay for Alpine. We need to keep moving. We need to do these hard things. Strategic planning prioritization town hall discussions, the next one is on the 16th, which is a Thursday at 5:30. And then funding for infrastructure repair. I know the city staff is looking at funding and I've also helped. We've spoken to our US congressmen, so we're working on trying to get this funding so that we can repair our infrastructure, our wastewater and our water treatment plant. I'm also a member of the zoning and planning committee. I just wanted to update with what's going on with them. The last meeting, we sworn a new member, Matt Walter, and public hearings today, 1, 2, and 3, or something that came through planning and zoning. And those are the replats. They are going to do a workshop at their next meeting. And to do that, they're going to look at the directives that city council has charged them with. All right, anything else, Gio, that I forgot regarding that? Okay, good. All right, so city attorney, your turn.
Yes, Mayor and Council, municipal court continued to run well. We're going to have one municipal court this month rather than two. We're trying to keep up with two per month going forward with some interface with Gio. We've set the dates for municipal court for the rest of the year. And it seems to be working well with the help of the police chief, our warrant roundup. It's doing good. Both clearing out our old cases and making people start to pay attention to their tickets. And we've made a task to look into the proposed AEP franchise agreement. I'll bring that to y'all in a future council, which y'all may understand that that was a 50-year agreement and it didn't pay us very much money. And I've done some research and some cities are getting substantially more for that. And so that's a good sort of tax revenue the city could get going forward. So we'll discuss that when we have the final versions of that ready. Y'all probably at the next council meeting. You all might remember about three months ago, Mr. Doherty came in. And they said that they were going to get back to me on a proposal, corresponded with their lawyer. They said they're going to get back to me on a proposal. Crickets, nothing. So I'm waiting for them to do that or not do that. That's where that is. It's all was sort of in their court to come back to the city. They were really interested. I'm happy to see the group from Skyway Gardens here, so I don't have to give much of an update on that. I was going to tell the council that I anticipated them coming here with this kind of request, this kind of update to the council. So I let them speak for themselves. Rather than the, I'm going to make sure I have a detailed city attorney update to present to y'all at every meeting that will discuss the matters I've been working on over the last couple of weeks and the projects that sort of in the near term that I'll be working on for y'all. And y'all might remember, we've gotten a public information request that we're, a encounter somebody had with one of our police sergeants in the Texas Attorney General came back and said it was correct for us to handle it the way we did, which was the public information. So that's done. Any questions?
Mr. Park, I previously asked for an update on dismissals in county court. At the next meeting, could you provide me with six months' worth of dismissals and the reasons for the dismissals, please?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Okay. City manager.
I'm going to be a short, no-slide presentation. Apologize if you can't hear me. And so we had a couple of people from the Parks Board who have been very active in our community. Reach out with TechSpot. Same time, Marcy has reached out with them as well. They do offer grants. So the first item is the Texas Department of Transportation 2023 Transportation Alternatives Call. So basically, they want, what do you guys need and how does it relate to the Alpine and of course our road? They won't give us money for paying any, I'm sorry. We try. But they've added a new category this year for planning. And so in the discussions, they kind of came in and said, hey, you know, we'd like you to apply. What do you need? How can we help you? What information can we provide you? The application was due the 27th. And so we didn't have an opportunity to bring it before council, but it's a two-phase. So I bit the bullet and I said, let's, let's put our foot in the door. It was literally a two-piece, two-page document that says, what are you looking for? And we applied for planning to do a mobility study for the whole entire city of Alpine. I've kind of visited with different entities and asked them, hey, since this mobility study would affect your entity, like Sol Roth in the school district, would you be willing to kind of maybe help contribute a little funding? Not the full amount, nothing outrageous, but just a little something to help us. And so far, everyone's come back with, I don't see why not. Let us know what happens. So that was really exciting. This is just phase one. We may never make it to phase two. And they did do our cost estimate for us. So TechSpot went in and did an estimate of what it would cost for us to have an engineer do a full mobility study. And this would address some of the things that we've talked about in the past with, you know, the buildings, the high school, getting from one school to another school, side walk, traffic congestion, and how how we move people. The people who are really interested in this are also looking at how do we, you know, bicycle lanes and and not actual vehicle travel, but mobility for public and general, walking paths, the trails, the bicycling, and getting that put together. They came back with an estimate of about 280,000 to do a full city study. So our portion would be 20%, which would be about $56,000. And this is phase one. I know that this would be something that if we even made it to phase two, we would have to look at how we would pay for it if, one, we didn't get outside funding and help the map. But as we've gone through all of the strategic planning and all these meetings we've had, a lot of things that we've talked about at this point, what's the plan? How are we going to know the flow of our pedestrians? Or how are we going to know what our roads need and what our infrastructure needs? Everything starts with a plan. Having an agency pay 80% of it is kind of a, I'd rather ask for forgiveness from you guys than not at least put our foot in the door. So we won't know anything back until about May or June, and then it will become phase two. Which of course will become before council and council will make the ultimate decision if we want to go through it. We just wanted to, like I said, put our, our foot in the door. Not too many people have had a mobility plan done. And so we're hoping kind of be at the top of the list. And there is a minimum on this grant of 100,000. So even if we went out and made cuts to make it a smaller opportunity, we'd still be looking at $20,000. But we do have other entities that are interested in helping. And the second one is a really big one. We've had a lot of awe moments. We'll fill in the second word to that. In 2021, the EPA, this environmental protective agency, passed a lead-in rule revisions for lead and copper. And so what that means is we now have a federal mandated requirement to provide an inventory of all of our infrastructure for our water lines. And exactly what it is. Is it galvanized? Is it lead and copper? Is it steel? Is it non-lead? Is it unknown? This has been a big issue for the city for years, having updated information on our infrastructure. Not only because we've lost that knowledge from individuals retiring, but we've never had a system in place like an updated GIS map or a GIS system, period. We hired a engineer in 2019 that we ended up settling with, not get sued, that produced zero information for us that we could use. So by October 16th, 2024, we have to present a complete inventory of our water system and what everything is. In 21 of December, or December of 21, they decided to make it even more fun, and we also have to report the customer side as well. So we have to know what every resident and business has in the ground as well. This is a huge ongoing, a huge task. And of course, there is 1,000 companies who are knocking on our door saying, hey, we'll help you. It's only going to cost you X, Y, and Z. Andrew Devaney, Johnny Marquez, and I did a couple of online workshops to kind of get an idea of how this is going to play out, what we need to do. And just off of the information that provided, we think we can do a majority of this in-house. It doesn't have to be this huge, detailed, beautiful map and spreadsheet to present. We just have to present. And there's a lot of requirements with this. We will be sending out customer surveys to all of the residents and businesses, asking them, hey, do you know what's in your ground? Are you PVC? I'm trying to get some of that information in. And we can utilize our software to at least get all of our connections for the most part. And the hard part is, is any line that's been retired also has to be reported. We don't have a database of everything that's been retired. And so the first phase of this project is literally just telling them what we have. So we've been talking about this pretty much since the beginning of this month with, how are we going to do this? How are we going to move on? I've received a couple of emails from the university with some possible interns. So I think we're going to have some people that will be able to help gather this information. So we're not too worried. They did give us the user, your CAD system, user tax office. Anything built after 1988 should be in compliance. Anything built prior to that is where you're going to have to question. And the city did do a water improvement project on the south side, which is Pueblo Nuevo area, which is the oldest part of Alpine on the system. So we know that that's been updated. But I really wanted to get this out there and make it very visible that you're going to get some letters in the mail. You're going to probably get some phone calls and like, hey, just want to know what do you have in the ground? Otherwise, we're going to have to come in and actually dig it up and visualize it for ourselves. So we've got a game plan in place. And we're hoping that it will be acceptable by EAP regulations. And then we'll present it to them by the deadline, of course. And then the next phase of this project is starting to replace. So it will be kind of like the gas department's dimp projects where they're required by federal law to replace so many feet of steel lines into poly. And the EPA is coming down, you'll have to replace so many feet of lead and copper. And it's not just the lines itself. If you've ever been to a water leak, can you see them put those cuplings on and tie in the pipes together? Well, they used to make those out of lead and copper. So it's also filling where all the cracks were. And so this will be a little bit of a project, but Andrew and Donnie have been real, let's do this, let's do this. And they did bring in two more team members who were like, oh, wow, this is real. So just to give you guys a heads up, you'll start seeing more of that coming down the line. The letters will go out to the public asking for assistance. And then they're getting submitted. So we have a little over a year.
Thank you for coming up. First, I met with TechSpot last week, and that was one of the people that had been at the TechSpot meeting in Austin. He said that TechSpot has never failed to fund anything that was planned, that was planned for the planning for it, he's approved.
Well, that's good to know. And this is a pressure they've added that item to the.
And so, you know, thank be, you know, thanks on truck bypasses or things about the railroad or all sorts of things like that. If we can get a plan, we could eventually maybe get TechSpot to build it first.
Well, this application process is just for pedestrian-type mobility.
Right, but I'm just, in the general scheme of things, we are.
Megan, how do the homeowners, like if I have a copper line, is that my expense or your own city?
We don't know yet.
And it's an unfunded mandate.
Yes.
Kind of love those, right?
We don't know who, what, when, where, why, how, until they release the next.
I'll warn you, I have not a clue with them.
Most people don't know.
You'd have to call all the plumbers. That's where you should start.
And we're going to work with them. We're going to work with the tax office because depending on the age of the stuff.
I'll get my shovel out.
And where they are. Ability to put unknown, but then we have to have a plan on how we're going to address the unknowns.
The older houses are going to have the copper. All right, Councilmember Johnson, did you have anything you wanted to add or ask Megan?
I don't have any comments or questions for Megan. It was a good informative report.
Thank you. Anybody else?
He says that because it's short.
Which was nice. Gio, we love you today. All right, so city manager. All right, city staff updates.
Mayor, before we go on, could we move Section 8-2? As individuals given the presentation have come from out of town. We still have over a three-hour drive to get home.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Okay, so hang tight, Jennifer. All right, so let's move to Section 8-2. Discuss support for Skyway Gardens 2 Development North of the current Skyway Gardens development, Alche Gia Road. Okay, and this was put on by our city manager.
Yes, a while back, the mayor and I visited with Roy Lopez and the Skyway Gardens projects. And they had provided a lot of information. There was a lot of questions. The general kind of feedback that I have received is we are concerned with the water infrastructure for that area. But I wanted him to actually do the full presentation to everyone so that you kind of can see where he's coming from. And then kind of have the discussion of how we want to move forward. He has a very time-sensitive application. So in order for us to move forward, we kind of need to know how council generally bills. And there is the concern with the water.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to ask for your support for our proposed second-phase development for Skyway Gardens. We're proposing to add 44 units to the existing development that has 49 units right now. Our design, our new design for the, for the new 44 units, which we call Skyway Gardens 2, is incorporates the same design features as the existing developments, which include full kitchens with refrigerator, dishwasher, microwave stove, and garbage disposal. We also, the units, they, all the units come with washer and dryer. And I'm also, the development has carports and a playground area. We, the development also will include a clubhouse that has a full gym, exercise gym in there with, with fitness equipment in there. And we provided you a package that has our design, that has a site plan on there and what we're proposing. You'll notice that in an effort to partner with the city, our design incorporates, is proposing to include a pond on our site that will capture the water that's coming off of the highway that's contributing to the drainage issues on Alche Gia Road. So we're proposing to add that design feature of including a pond. We have a second pond that captures all our water from our, from our new development. And on a new development and our second develop, and, and our existing development, none of the water, none of the drainage water on our development contributes any water to Alche Gia Road. It's all captured onsite on our ponds that are onsite. I do have the architect, our architect here, our engineer and our attorney here to assist me if you have any specific questions when I ask of them. As Megan pointed out, we are time-sensitive on our timeline to submit our application for this tax credit deal is March 1st. So we pretty much, when we met with, with Megan and the mayor, we did pretty much indicate to him that we need to kind of have an idea. If we have your support for this development, because we do have to add to, actually, we have to go out and get a lot of third-party reports that go with our application. We have to get surveys, we have visibility reports, environmental reports, market studies. So we have to order that now to be able to meet our, our March 1st timeline. That's, that's why we're here to make this presentation. Again, you have the, we provided you with a site plan and pictures of what the units, the units have in them. We're basically here to answer any of your questions or concerns. We've heard there's some infrastructure concerns, but we're not quite sure what, what they are or how they relate to what, what the city's concerns are.
I would kind of like to know what kind of issues you said we had with that.
It's been reported on several occasions, and, and I know a lot of people think it's the apartments themselves. Well, the apartments actually have a water tank on their property. It's housing coming off that line further down that have pressure issues. This was actually discussed back in 2019. They moved forward with the project. Well, in about 2021, Jessica Washington, a former employee, and Scott Perry, the Chilean director of the time, actually had reached out to our engineers and said, hey, we're going to have some issues. How do we address it? They were aware when I reached out to them and said, hey, have you heard this? Is this something, you know, give me some feedback. And they were aware, it had been briefly discussed, but nothing had been further done. There wasn't any like, let's do a study, let's see what's wrong. And further discussion with them, in order to continue to develop that area, there would have to be a study done to ensure that we can maintain the pressure for that. And it's not just that little area. You're talking about that side of town. And they looked at, or mentioned, and I know this was brought up by employees prior and currently with the water department about putting in elevated storage tanks. That would add another part to our system. They were looking at doing that around the Musquies area, and that would help provide additional water right there. And speaking with the engineers, it's Jacob and Martin, it's our engineering company. They said it could be actually a couple of things. I have my notes here. It could be a line size issue. When the original lines were put in, of course, they weren't put in for development, which means the line were too small to continue to push the water needed to all of the areas. That would, that would have been great to have from the engineers who were supposed to provide all this information to us, because then we would know. And it could be an elevation issue. Our system is gravity-fed. So the water isn't actually pumped to the different locations. It goes through our, our system by gravity, which can be more complex. It's understanding where does it slow down? What do we need to do? He does remember them talking about putting in an elevated storage tank. And we may need additional pump stations. And in speaking with Mr. Marquez, there was pump stations put in on the south side of town that were never developed or used. So it's kind of equipment that sat there and it's been sitting there, and that could have been something that would have been needed for further expansion of that part of town. But it was never developed and used. So that would be more complex and trying to get that back up and running and putting it into our infrastructure system. So they're willing to do a feasibility study. The only problem is because you're time-sensitive, it wouldn't be completed in the time to know whether or not we would have issues in this development. He said it would be an estimated 30 days to complete the feasibility study. I've already sent them everything that we have digitally, our, the prior engineering company that did provide us what we thought we could use to see if they would be able to use it, see if they had the data software and stuff to open it up. And they've been reviewing it, and it's not much different than what we originally had provided that engineering company. So there's still a lot of questions on the line sizes and, and the direction, gravity of that. It really is a council decision. We just, I hate to have you put the project in. I know that you are willing to work with us. But I don't know what, what's going to happen once you do. We don't know if we'll have issues with water pressure. We don't know if, you know, we'll have to go in and put in that elevated storage tank or we'll have to redo inspections of lines to feed that direction. It's unfortunately a what-if game because we don't have a plan. And the city didn't plan for development. This is moving further out into the county areas and annexing new properties.
So, but that's the chances that we're taking, and we can't stop just because of that. We just let Dollar General in, not knowing what it was going to do. I realize that we're talking about more usage of water. But I have questions on whether we can actually afford to wait. I know previous councils had gone out asking for developers to come in and, and do affordable housing in the city. And we didn't get much luck in any. do affordable housing in the city, and we didn't get much luck and anybody willing to do it. So I, I mean, we finally have someone that is willing to do it and help us with the issues that we have. Uh, as was brought up, it's, it's been an issue with sorrow students, uh, border patrol DPS. They don't, they have nowhere to stay. You know, we have people that are trying to come in from Marfa, and of course, Martha's getting just as bad on 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 having affordable housing available.
But you also have to remember the affordable housing, he's gonna have two market available apartments. Border Patrol is not gonna qualify for housing.
Well, the market values will not.
Yeah, we do. We're proposing to, we possibly could put four market rate units on it. Uh, you know, we're looking at all the numbers, two for sure, possibly four market rate units. The market rate units would basically be unrestricted. I mean.
That's your border patrol, that's your DPS.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. The higher income, the ones that do not qualify based on income for the affordable units. Those would be the higher income individuals.
We are already experiencing several issues in that, in that area as far as water pressure and.
It's water pressure.
It's water pressure. And then adding this would then.
It would deter that water to a new section. So you're still having to maintain this section and then.
But again, could it, could I ask where you're experiencing those waters? Because our development doesn't have any water pressure issues. I mean, we're constantly check on it. We checked on it today throughout the units and we don't have water.
Down on the south side. Remember, you're, you're kind of at the beginning where this water is coming down. So it's, as it trickles down, it's not making it at the full level to the end of the city side. And it's not just the Giya. You're talking about that whole section of.
To the west of Letche Gia or where? Cuz I thought Letche Gia was at the end.
Yeah, northwest. So think about the houses on the other side going straight down.
So you suggest that we stop all building or allowing of anything to come into Alpine until we're able to work on our infrastructure, which could be ten to twenty years?
I suggest that we have a plan in place. If we're gonna move forward and you're gonna support projects, that you be prepared to to cut the check when you have to put in even for sure.
How much is this check you're gonna have?
We don't know because we don't know if it needs, it may not need anything. We don't know cuz there's no development, there's no plan, there's no understanding of what works.
Well, if you're already experiencing issues now, I mean, do you have several, I mean, how many complaints are you getting due to water pressure? I mean, I've seen, you know, some emails that have come through.
I don't have a number for you. I'm all for, you know, supporting development. I mean, that is definitely a compliment. But there's a second side to it.
It's against or against development. We need housing.
Let's do it right.
Study shows that you do need.
Forty some odd people water and the residents are already there won't have water. How, does that seem fair? No?
And and that that really is what it boils down to. Um, and if if you guys wanna support it, and that's completely fine, but be prepared when they come in. And and let's do the feasibility study, whether they do it this year or they postpone their project to another year. If we have to make those improvements, th- this is one of those hard discussions you keep hearing about is you're gonna have to cut a check to make the improvements. And then you have to realize we'll have to hire a third party to come in.
I assume that there were some of these issues present when they put up the first development.
Yes.
Can you tell me if the developers worked with the city in trying to make sure that the city did not yet?
I only have third parties here saying. Um, I've gone through prior city managers' emails to try and get a better understanding, and I know there was some complications with this project. A lot of back and forth. But during the initial application process, you've had two new city managers, you've had three different utility directors getting exactly the who, what, when, why, and where. There's nothing.
Mr. Lopez, can you tell me that the things the city requested on the first development?
No, the, on the first development, there was no real discussion about the water pressure for domestic water. Uh, there was an issue with the fire line. Because there's fire hydrant right in front of our development on Letche Gia. And there was not enough, and Fred can speak to this, uh, there was not enough flow on the fire hydrant for the fire line. So there was not enough flow coming out of that fire hydrant to be able to support you know, in emergency on our development. So what we propose to mitigate that is we put a storage tank, uh, water storage tank on our property, which we're proposing one on the new development also, and a private fire hydrant on our development to help mitigate that issue for the city that that one fire hydrant would not support our development. So I know that came up. Uh, there's, I don't recall any real discussion about not enough pressure on the water line. And like I say, we installed it and there is pressure on the water line, so we're fine with the domestic water. The only issue was the fire line.
So I guess my point was that you were willing to work with the city on the issues that came up.
Right, right. And that's why we proposed to do at this, the water storage tank and and the private fire fire hydrant, cuz we knew there was an issue with that fire hydrant, so we have our own fire hydrant onsite. And the new development will have the same exact thing. A water storage tank and a and a private fire hydrant.
Could you make your application knowing that the the city may or may not be in a position to give you the proper water pressure? So.
Well, no, there's, uh, with our application that I think I submitted samples of what what was provided last time. There's three things that I need to submit with my application from the city of Alpine. One of them is the resolution of support, which I provided a draft of of what they looked like, and I provided a copy of the one that was issued before. We need, uh, the annexation also for the property. And we need a will serve letter. The will serve letter is for utilities that basically there's thorough water and gas for the property. We get the same, we also need electric, but we get that from AP. That's a letter we get from them. But we know, we talked to them and they said there is enough service for electrics. It's basically the will serve letter from the city for gas, water, and so.
Is it correct that you've also limited the use of the city water to not put as much pressure on it by by?
Yeah, yeah, good point. Uh, we do have, we do have a well on site on our existing property, and we use that well for all the irrigation water. And we also use it to supplement the the storage tank for the fire. So we're actually mitigating some of the wa- water pressure by not using any of the city water for irrigation, and we would be doing the same thing with the second phase development connecting to that water well to help supplement the water tank, uh, for the fire hydrant and the irrigation. We'd be connecting to the same water well.
And if we're not able to support it at this time, is this something that you can revisit next year?
No, no, we won't. We won't be looking at another deal here for several years. It's just based on the allocations that we have coming up for tax credits. We both won't be looking at anything here for a while. Right now, it's up. I submitted a pre-application for Skyway Gardens, and it is in with the state right now. It is the highest scoring app that I submitted. So with your support, it would get awarded, cuz it is the highest scoring app that I submitted.
Councilmember Johnson? You have any comments, questions?
Well, I'm in agreement with, you know, supporting new businesses and new projects like this. But it seems to me like Megan and I were talking one time not too long ago that there's a I'm gonna call it a program that the city can initiate where new developments incur uh, a part of the pro- the cost of providing utilities for their development if they don't already exist. And I don't really remember what that program or whatever was called, and I don't know whether it would be applicable to this particular project or not.
Counselor Johnson, did you say that it would help with developments that they didn't exist? If if the service didn't exist? Is that what you said?
It was my understanding that it was something, a policy or whatever that the city could initiate that new developments would have to incur the cost of providing city services or services of any kind to their project. And I don't really remember, maybe Megan would remember what uh, what I'm talking about here. And I don't know whether it's applicable to this or not.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, because I I think it's the first comment you said that if they didn't exist.
So the services don't exist. I mean, this would be an all new install. So part of the development or developers agreement could indicate that they would have to provide X, Y, and Z. Um, they do have a current development agreement on the first Skyway Garden's project. Um, though they they change, um, the one that they have signed is a standard of form. Um, moving into a project like this, it could be put in there that they have to provide, and then it can be all listed up.
Because the services don't exist.
Yeah, and and the services are there. There is water and there's sewer right on Letche Gia. And when we did phase one, it it was our cost to connect to the water line. It was at our cost that we connected. We paid all the fee to connect for the gas, for the gas, the water, the sewer, and of course, electric. We've paid up, we paid all that. So we do pay for our connections to the existing, to the existing lines.
And because of the size of the meter, um, for the initiative, that that's a major cost.
Right, and and we paid for all that. Exactly. We paid for all that ourselves for our development, which we would do here also.
Going back to the population that's being affected with this or that could possibly be affected, just how big of a population are we looking at?
I don't have those numbers and.
I mean, I know, I know you can't give me a definite. Are we looking at it's going to affect a thousand people or are we looking at a hundred people?
You're looking at several hundred. I mean, once we know the the feasibility study and and if it's the lines or if it's, we need an extra source of water to feed that area, you'll have more information. Um, and that's why that, like I said, that that one map is really important to know the size of our lines. Um, and then what's available.
Now, did you say we could have the feasibility study before their deadline?
No.
And do you know what size lines are on on Letche Gia? And what, if they're all the same that feed into it?
They're not all the same. That I do know. Um, the last map I looked at, I believe those are six, but I don't know what was installed for your project. I think those may be, may larger, but one of your, and I believe there's two lines. Sometimes I'm a very visual person, so I'm thinking, I think they put in two lines. And one really, it does nothing. It's kind of capped, and the other one goes back into the RV area. Um, but you're, like I said, your your lines are feeding a small portion. It's where the all the water's coming from in those tanks to feed the whole side. So you're kind of coming off the hill and the first one to get hit, it's getting the water to the rest of the people.
Right, cuz they do a development agreement that said they would uh, work with the city to share cost of upsizing any lines there that might be needed to ensure that the rest of the property in the east got adequate water pressure.
You had mentioned that, but I'll let him.
Well, that, that, that would be fine, but it would have to be capped, because I mean, I've.
I understand. So we, we, yeah, we're mutually similar in a way.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. I mean, you you'd have to give me a number now.
I don't think we have it, but we're we're trying to figure out a way that we get you able to apply.
No, no, I know, I understand, but uh, when I say you have to give me a number now, you have to give me a range and say, it looks like, uh, you know, we're gonna incur a hundred thousand, and we're looking at you contributing half of that. Okay, so then I can run my numbers and know that my, that my development still works in contributing fifty thousand to the city for infrastructure. If you can't give me a number or you later come back and say, oh, yeah, it's actually two hundred thousand. Well, my development has to pass underwriting at the state. And I can't change the numbers once I submit them. Otherwise, it won't, it won't get approved.
Megan, do we have any historical figures on how much something like that might cost?
No, the city hasn't made those type of improvements in forty, fifteen years.
What about a, an application that you gave us a cap, that you know you could go up to some number and still make your application? So you would contribute up to X amount.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I could give you a number. Yeah, I could give you a number that I could.
Why don't you talk about a number with Megan and see if that would work for you? You see what I'm talking about, that he would agree to contribute X number of dollars or upsizeingly water infrastructure.
I understand what we're trying to do, but at the same time, we're asking people to come in and take a chance on Alpine. I mean, they're, they're putting their livelihood, their money on the line, and we're asking them to help the city fund things that we have let go wrong for years and years. And have we done that to other businesses that have to have that have come in? Do we, I know we didn't ask that from the Dollar General. I mean, it's, like I said, I I see what we're doing and and that may be a solution for the city. But I have questions whether it's it's specifically right that we're asking the businesses for this, cuz it's not only helping the business that's coming into the city, but it's going to help a broader.
The hard question, Chris, is whether they wanna support it or not, whether you wanna support the project or not. If our water lines can't hold and contribute to the population as a whole, is the city gonna cut that check? Are we gonna make something? Because as soon as we get running and they get them fully housed, and you've got everyone living there, and it's it's great, we've got more housing, and you start getting those complaints. How are we gonna address it? I mean, that's why I I think no matter if 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 we get support, you guys wanna support, the feasibility study has to happen, cuz then we'll know. We'll know that, you know what, your project is great, we're not worried about it. You know what, we're gonna have issues. You're not gonna be completely fully built until probably twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, cuz it does take some time. That gives us time to plan. We know what we'll have to do to go in there and fix it. So I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm fully supportive of either decision, either direction the council wants to go to. I just wanna make sure when I come back and say, we've done this feasibility study, where our issue lies. Whether they give us a check or not, it doesn't matter. It's, are we going to move forward and get it fixed? Are we gonna do what we've done for twenty years and put it on the back burner and say, we'll get to it?
Well, that's another thing. I mean, we put Band-Aids on so many things. Are we gonna create this and then have to put Band-Aids on this as well? That's something that, you know, we need to do it right if we're gonna do it.
But at the same time, how long have we waited for someone to bring in new communities?
When council years ago didn't approve the first one. You, we've had other public housing come in and not, I'm sorry, affordable, come in and say, hey, I wanna do this, and councils denied for whatever reasons at the time. And you're right, we need it, we need to move forward with it, we need to have these discussions. But at the same time, the city didn't plan for development and expansion. So step one, we get the the feasibility study, and it may be, we maybe we spend five thousand dollars to know that there are no problems whatsoever. But then we know there's no problem, and we can continue to develop. Maybe they wanna Skyway three and four, and they wanna start developing that whole area into a gated community. That's great, but if we can't expand and know we can support it, it makes it harder.
Like I said, I understand that it's just a new community has not opened up in Alpine in a very long time. Uh, we've had issues trying to get anybody to take a chance on Alpine. And I guess.
And that's why it's going straight to you. It's very full frontal here with, hey, let's develop, but be prepared when we have to cut that five hundred thousand check or a five thousand dollar check just for a plan. And then we know we're good, we can expand further, cuz it's not just his area. When you think about it, our city limits is right along that whole pathway. Anyone wanting to develop into that area, I'd love to be able to, you know what? You're golden. We can handle you. We can get you the services you need. But we don't know if we can get them. I mean, his his deadline is March first. You know, I can move forward with the feasibility study. It's still not gonna, he'll still have to move forward with council and your approval or or not approval. But then we have it in place, and we know, hey, there's actually, we're good. Or you know what, if we're gonna continue to develop this direction, we need to make improvements. And there was improvements in that side of town. I just don't wanna tell, you know, Mr. Lopez and and councils, like, yes, we're gonna back you and we're gonna support you, and then in a year, I'm coming to you, okay? Well, now we've got this project to go through.
And before. And we're also talking about housing for people coming into town. You need three border patrol and six teachers. They can't go down there and rent from you. You're making too much money. So we have a limited population that we're helping out anyway. I only know, I have a border patrol son. He couldn't have gone down there and rented right now. I mean, he couldn't. He couldn't have done it, and that's what's coming into Alpine.
Well, but.
I understand it. Maybe if it was half and half, but if you're gonna only give them four places to rent, we want teachers, we need, we need all of the medical. These people are gonna be making too much money to go down there and rent. And y'all will have water. It's the people downstream that won't have it. Is that right? And we need housing. I'm not telling you we don't. I think it's a great idea. I I just think if we had gotten all this like, and and I know it's nobody's, nobody, it's the timing now. If we approve this and find out we can't do it, and it costs us a million dollars, where do we get that from to help keep you in water? Does that make sense?
No, I understand.
I I mean, we we don't have a million, and you build, and we have to shut somebody off. Who's it gonna be? First come, last in, first out. How do we do that? That would don't be my only problem. I think it's wonderful that they're gonna put in something. I've always thought, what's down there is wonderful. It's great. I know people living down there, they love it. It's not that we don't like y'all's development. It's, I, you know, we wanna take a chance, that's fine. It's like a rolling. You know, we want to take a chance, that's fine, it's like a rolling of dice. And it may be four thousand, and then we come up with a million dollar bill, everybody be ready to pay for it. Because it it'll have to come from somewhere.
And that's what we've been doing the last twenty years, rolling the dice.
I agree, I agree one hundred percent, Chris. I do agree.
Is council ready to vote?
But I think we would. Kind of need to get kind of consensus as to. Whether we're thinking of supporting it or not, so that they can figure out whether they're gonna take the expensive. Added expense of trying to get the application filled or not.
So we can have a called meeting, or we can put it on the next agenda, which would give you a smaller window of opportunity, but you'd still have it.
Right.
Um, and make it a voting item. Um, I could do a little bit more research, like I said, our our turnover with utility directors um has been so high. There's been ten since I've been here, and I've been here ten years, there's literally been one every year. Um, and and so the information is, like I said, I going through emails and and listening and going through notes and and. You know, building official information. Um, it's hard. I don't think that we should not go move forward with the feasibility study, no matter what. Uh, because you want to develop, and the only way you're gonna move that area of town is to know if we can support it with utilities. Um, I also think that maybe Roy and I could visit a little bit more and see how the application, if there's not some type of wording, we can protect both of us.
What the, th- there really is, isn't the, remember last time I came down here and I met with you and the mayor was, uh. January eleventh. And I kind of gave you the timeline that I have. I'm pretty much hitting the the end of my timeline now. I've got reports that take three weeks to generate. From third-party environmental report that they have to do. It's not something I generate, it's a third-party company that comes in and does their environmental environmental report. We're basically three weeks out from me submitting my application. So if if I don't get a consensus, and no pressure. Okay, if I don't get a consensus, then yeah, it's something we we're looking that we're gonna support. We just need to tweak a few things, and I can run with it and start ordering all these reports and. Uh, just to give you a figure, to to submit an application with the state between all the reports, everything that goes in there, it's a cost of. A low of fifty thousand, a high of seventy-five thousand. That's what I have to release, and I've been, I've been holding off. You know, trying to figure out what's gonna happen here with 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 council. So I need, I'm at a point where I need to release those reports, leave here and start making my calls and say, yeah, proceed. Otherwise, I don't have time for them to generate their reports. One one of those reports that I do not include in my application, the application is rejected. It's. That technical, that they, everything has to be submitted on time included, I can't supplement the application later.
Well, I kind of feel like it's a little bit unfair to us to kind of just give you an answer right now without really. You know, figuring out. What it all entails, I mean. Maybe we could call another meeting beforehand, maybe we could do it at the next meeting. Yeah, we have three weeks. I said, well, you know, we're gonna have to. I don't know, I mean, I just kind of feel that that's kind of unfair to us as a council to hurry up and decide, you know. What what it is you want us to do.
No, understood, that's why I was hoping to get in front of you all a lot earlier than.
Right.
Than today.
And we can do a called meeting and have it as an actionable item, so that something can be done, and we can do that within. They need a minimum of thirty days.
He's not asking for a letter of support right now, I guess, can we just? I mean, if he gets two, three of us that say no, he knows where he needs to go from there. I mean, he's not asking for for the letter of support now, he's not asking for a vote. He's just asking, is it even gonna happen? And if he gets three of us to say no, then I mean, nothing's gonna change, so there's no need to try to put in a meeting in seventy-two hours or.
The consensus invited invited to me in emails and discussion, um individually, not violating any rules here. Um, everyone's on board except for they're worried about the water. And that was the responses I received.
When do you need the letter of support?
Well, the letter of support has to be with my application, so.
For March first.
Yeah, you could actually do it at your next council meeting, it's. It's, uh, knowing that, like Chris said, that. There's five of you that three of you supported, I I know. That's a majority, so then I know the next council meeting, when it comes up for action. If the three hold, then I'm good. We're gonna move on and get my, get the items I need. Three of you. Just right now are are flat no, then I know they're. It's not gonna happen.
Feasibility study. We give, go on and give you a thing, and then we do one, and it comes back and it's good, that's great, in in life grand. But if it comes back and says no, now we've already told you, oh, go ahead.
Right.
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 And do you see our?
No, I do, I do, and and, no, I don't, no, I s- I see yours, and that's why. I'm trying to tell you what mine is also, because I I definitely, I definitely like Alpine. We love the development we have, we know there's a need for more housing, we'd love to do a second phase, and. That's why we proposed it this year.
So Megan, what more information can you give us between now and the city council meeting?
Now that I've turned over more information to the engineers, I can follow up with him, he has issued a task order for me to sign. Um, to move forward with an actual feasibility study. Um, I am gonna be very upfront here, whether you support or not support, the feasibility study is gonna get done, it needs to be done, because, I mean, it's not. Fair to just one individual, but that whole area to develop. Um, but he may be able to utilize what was provided, and he may be, hey, look, I've already gone, we could open these files that you have no access to, and. Oh yeah, no, you'll be fine, or you know what, you're, you do have some mind issues. Um, I don't know, um, I wanted to have the discussion tonight and have the information um from you guys to move forward. Um, because it is time sensitive. I also do want council to understand, and and Mr. Lopez has been willing to work with the city and and not all businesses, and we do that with all businesses. Um, but down the road, the big thing we've talked about in all of our strategic planning has lately been planning. Um, in order to move forward, this is one of those steps that, you know, we get the feasibility study. Um, he won't be fully up and running for, I'm gonna say.
Two years, yes, two years.
And that does give us time, that does give us time, okay, you know what, we're gonna need to make these improvements. We've already started the planning process and the discussions with the the residents. And in order to continue to have the these wonderful things come into Alpine, we have to be able to support them. Right, so it comes back and we don't do anything, then we wasted your time, I apologize. But if it comes back and say, and I come to you and I say, hey, this is what's going on, these are our options. We have money put aside to help us with this, let's move forward with it, and we're not gonna wait till he's trying to cut the ribbon and 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 put people in in houses. But it's also. Allowing that area to to develop as well. So so I I mean, yes, support it, I I mean, I I think we can compromise and work together. But I want the council to understand, when you talk about hard decisions, is your support may come with a price tag. And it's not fair for a company or any individual to bear it. I mean, he's willing to work with us, which is a great deal for us. But it doesn't matter if he develops it, another company comes in to develop it, a business tries to come in and develop it. If we can't, or we don't know, then we're gonna be in the same place we are right now.
Well, I say do the study, I I don't have a problem supporting it, you know what, we're gonna have to, we'll do this someday anyway, it might as well be now.
We've been talking about redoing it after meeting.
When are we all gonna start paying to fix Alpine? Well, maybe this is where it needs to start right here.
And he says that it's not gonna be until two years.
Yeah, so.
Did you not, did you not say that we were going to look into going into, and actually get going, going into debt? In the next couple of years.
The plan is not to really go into debt, it's to utilize all of the.
Grabs and everything else.
Yeah.
I mean, you kind of said that in the last, in the next year, so we're gonna, we're gonna fix this one way or another.
For big things, we will have to go into debt if we don't. Utilize the opportunities we have. Um, for those of you in the audience who don't know, we still have funding um from the American Rescue Plan. Um, specifically for infrastructure. So so we have small pots of money, and and yeah, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, that is small compared to what we're paying for material right now. But that helps us. That is, I can get a grant, and this is gonna pay that twenty percent to ensure we get the whole east, southwest, north side of town done. But it's making sure we know that's the direction we're going, and that's what the city hasn't done. We go out for grants and we hope we get them. But we don't really look at the focus of how's it gonna impact as the city as a whole. If we have to go out for debt, it will be very specific, it will be very detailed, it will be very public. I mean, this isn't gonna go borrow from the bank and then tell you guys, oh yeah, I borrowed half a million, no, this is, this is what we're gonna use it for. Um, we have the two years to work with him, we have, you know, a developer's agreement that, you know, will outline and dictate, you know, kind of our compromises with each other. Um, everyone knows we need affordable housing, it moves those who are paying two thousand a month into a house they can afford, and. Border Patrol can come into that two thousand a month house.
Uh, and we're gonna have to go into debt, we've discussed this, that might as well be where we start. There's gotta be a first project, well, that, if it need be, maybe that's where it has to be.
And right now, there's not a grant that can fund something like that, but let's get the plan and see, and like I said, we may invest five thousand dollars. Best investment to find out, we have to do zero. Or it may come back with, you know what, you really do need to make some improvements, but then we'll know.
Well, let's do the plan, but in the meantime, let's try to give some kind of consensus, so whether he'll know come tomorrow morning, whether he needs to. Order the reports that he's gonna need in three months, or are you all wanting to just basically just say? Forget it, we're gonna let this.
Judy already said she supports it.
I would support it, I'd like to say, we're gonna have to do this at some point. And this can be our starting.
The consensus has been everyone supports it. The backup or the the butt to that is the water side. Support it, and let let's move forward with making sure we can do the water, let's not support it, and then sit here doing this, and then he's like, okay, I'm ready to.
And if we have to fix the water.
And that's one of our goals anyway.
Counsel, the 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 discussion I've heard is that. They probably have water for them, but giving water to them may affect other parts of that part of Alpine. What the other parts of Alpine don't have enough water, we need to fix that anyway. It's not just doing it for them, it's it's doing it for the citizens.
Martin, how do you feel? Do you think this is something you could support?
Like, we need housing, you know, but. The water's scary, you know, we can get the water pressure down there, but I'm for for the housing.
Sir? I'm for the housing as well, but you know, like I said, I don't want to put more Band-Aids on. On anything, I mean, like you said, we're gonna do it, let's do it right, you know, I I do, I do agree that we do need the housing. That part I do understand, but yes, I am concerned about the water, and I am concerned about the other citizens who live. You know, in the same vicinity, the vicinity that. You know, are gonna have to experience those type of problems. So that would be a no for you right now. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I don't think it's really fair to ask me that, you know, I'm kind of yes, I'm kind of no, I mean. I don't know, I I really just don't know right now.
Okay, Council Johnson.
Well, I suggest, I support the project. I suggest we take a straw vote. To give this young man some encouragement as to our support and move forward.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, Jerry.
It's a non-voting.
Okay, so. Thank you for your time.
Well, I do want to thank you for being taking, taking a chance on Alpine. Like I said, we've had tried different developers, uh. For those of you that don't know, I do manage a property, I don't work for Mr. Lopez, but I do manage the property. We have not had any problems, it it has been wonderful, the tenants are very happy. And like Judy, and like Judy says, you know, it it it's not gonna have a lot of market. But it it is going to open up other places that they're able to get. And he has worked with the city, uh, historically, he's worked with the city very well, and I I think we can pretty well, uh. Know that that's the way it's gonna continue, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, I again, I enjoyed working here in Alpine, I enjoy having our development here, and. I know there's more housing, that's that's why we're proposing this, and we definitely want to partner with the city. I mean, we're more than happy to have any discussions. We have feasibilities. You have a feasibility study, you want us to have some input on, you know, I have our engineers and architects, they can look at it also, and.
Can you tell us all of our water lines?
Yeah, we definitely want to be a partner.
Not, because they're gonna send me a letter, and I proposed enough.
Right.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council.
Y'all have a safe drive.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
I I can't decide. There's a folder number one, we're home rule.
Hey, we're going back into session. Please take a seat. Make sure your cell phones are off. All right, city staff update. Come on up. I know it's your favorite thing.
Well, thanks for having me. Um, I'm Jennifer. I'm the supervisor for animal services and I'm gonna give your report for our, uh, the the year twenty twenty-two. So this is just gonna be kind of a brief overview of what we did and our numbers and and a little extra stuff too. So.
Let's see, we'll get a slide situated.
Geo, okay. You're both looking at computers at it. Okay, so um, our stray intakes, so we had a total of two hundred and sixty-eight strays that came into the shelter. Um, a hundred and sixty-four dogs, ninety-nine were cats and one was a chicken. Um, compared to last year, we actually, last year we had three hundred and sixty-one strays. So we dropped almost a hundred strays this this past year. So, I mean, congratulations Alpine for doing that. I mean, it's, people are, people are fixing things, so. Yeah, yeah. Uh, March, uh, between March and May, um, was the biggest increases. And then we, we had a steady decline for the rest of the year. Um, stray intakes by ward. Um, I always like to do this so we can kinda see where our problem areas might be. Uh, most of our stray cats were found in Ward Four. Um, the least amount of stray cats, um, were found in Ward One. Uh, for dogs, it was Ward Two was the most, and um, there was a tie between one, three, and five for the lowest. So we're still looking at two and four. Those are highest, our highest wards. For strays. Uh, feral cats, so I have, we've been kind of gathering dat- data for throughout the last four years or so. Um, so these are kind of just kind of where we've seen, um, our feral cat populations. Compared, um, by ward over the last four years, uh, most feral cats have been found in Ward Four. Um, and that's the same with our friendlies, like I just said. So these are, those are friendly stray cats. Um, overall, there is a significant decrease in, um, since twenty nineteen. Um, we, um, are definitely contributing that to our, um, spay neuter projects that we've been doing with our trap neuter return. Feral cat program as well as, um, there's a lot of, uh, spay and neuter help with the Humane Society as well, so. Hopefully, we'll just keep seeing that go down. Um, surrenders, we had forty-two total surrenders, fifteen were cats and twenty-seven were dogs. That's also a decrease in numbers. Um, other intakes, uh, total brought in due to an owner medical emergency. We had one dog from the county, uh, nineteen chickens and four dogs from Ward Four, uh, one dog from Ward Three, um, which an owner did not reclaim. Um, one dog from the county due to a car accident, um, a relative reclaimed that one. Uh, total brought in due to arrest. We had two dogs from Ward Five, um, which the owner did not reclaim. Um, total, total brought in for quarantine. We had fifteen dogs, which is was a pretty high number this year. Um, and then we had a total of six kittens and seven puppies born in our shelter, in our care. Uh, returned to owner.
That's pretty low, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it it wasn't. I mean, they, we like to see nobody born in our shelter, obviously, but yeah, it's. We usually see at least one litter one way or the other, so, um, we're hoping this year it won't be that way. Uh, returned to owner out of the two hundred and sixty-eight strays, um, a hundred and thirty-seven of those were actually returned to owner. Um, a hundred and twenty-eight were dogs and eight were cats and then the chicken that we discussed earlier. So that's why I put chicken up there. Uh, adoption, so I got some, we've been, um, actually documenting, um, our adoptions as of late. We have, um, all of these. Um, wonderful families up here that, um, we've been taking pictures of, um, with their, um, with their new pets. So, uh, in total for last year, we had a hundred and twenty adoptions, uh, fifty-seven cats, fifty dogs, and then, uh, thirteen chickens. Those ones that we got in, um, from the. The medical emergency. Um, transports, we actually transported eighty-eight animals to other rescues. Um, fifty-eight cats and thirty dogs. These are all pictures of kind of our progress with that, um, animals actually being transported. Um, and then them going into foster homes are actually with their new families. So it's a really important thing that we do to also increase our, our live and. Um, live outcome numbers. Um, I just wanted to throw this in because I thought this was really fun. Um, Yukon, uh, was a dog that came into our shelter last year. Um, and he actually was, uh, transported to one of our rescue partners up north. Um, and eventually, this actually just happened this January, and so that's why I kinda wanted to include it. Um, he was, um, accepted into a prison program. So he's actually, um, you can see he's actually, um, in a prison, like. And and being able to, um, get proper training, which we couldn't provide here, um, with the wonderful guys that are up there, um, in that program. Um, it's called a pause program, and it's great for the inmates and it's great for the dogs. So we're pretty, pretty excited for Yukon to see what happens with him.
Kind of training do they get?
Um, just obedience training and things like that, yeah. But it's a good program. Um, other outcomes, you know, that we do, uh, do sometimes have those sad outcomes. Luckily, not a lot, but, um, we did have, um, some kittens die. And, uh, due to illness in our shelter, we had, um, some, um, disease that did go through our population. So we did have ten kittens die. Um, one dog did pass away unfortunately to, due to old age. Um, we did have to do some euthanases, uh, two kittens due to that same illness, um, a younger cat due to illness, two adult cats due to illness. And then three, three dogs after a dog bite that were not reclaimed and two dogs due to unadoptability. So, very, very low numbers as well. Um, shelter counts throughout the year. We started on January first with thirty-eight total animals in our care. Uh, twenty of them were cats, eighteen were dogs. And then by December thirty-first, we saw only seventeen in our shelter. So a pretty good decrease there. We only had three cats and fourteen dogs. Uh, microchipping, so we placed thirty-two microchips for the public, um, thirteen, thirteen for cats and nineteen for dogs. Um, we actually, um, that's actually kind of a low number. So we're gonna look into that, maybe hopefully we can get some, um, some chips to actually do a. Um, a, a microchipping event, um, to maybe up those numbers. Last year was, I think, in the seventies or eighties because we did. We did do one of those, so, um, we wanna see everybody getting those chips and those animals so we can get them home. Um, we were also gifted, um, some scanners from the Best Friends Animal Society. Um, so we have scanners in all of our officers' trucks now, as well as at our police department. So that if somebody does find, um, a stray animal, they can either go to the police department, or if we find an animal out in the field. Hopefully, we can reunite without having to bring the animal all the way to the shelter. So we're, that's still a work in progress. Um, total bites, so we did have, um, thirty-five total bites reported to us, uh, this last year. Uh, most happened in September, um, but we did not have any in December, which was, which was good. We're hoping that that number stays low throughout the rest of this next year. Oh, citations. Um, we issued a hundred and forty-seven citations last year. Uh, most of them were running at large with, uh. With the, uh, no license as our, our, um, second most popular. Um, it's, it seems to always be the running at large. That's our most, uh, popular citation. Uh, monthly PSAs, um, as you, some of y'all might know, I'd be trying to do a new PSA every month, and I'm starting that into this summer as well, or this year as well. Um, it's just getting some basic information out there about either ordinances, city licensing, microchipping, spay and neuter. Um, trying to hit on all sorts of things just to give the, the public a little bit more education on things that we're doing or. Um, just animal care in general. So keep an eye on those. We do post those on, on our Facebook pages. Okay, um, training, um, all three, we had three officers, and well, that was one, including myself, that, um, got training last year. Um, Crystal actually got to complete her, uh, two-day basic ACO, um, certification. Along with a Licensed Rabies Control Authority, um, course that followed that training. Um, that we recommend that, or we, we require all of our, um, beginning officers to take those, um, those courses. So we're happy that she was able to complete that. Um, Charles completed a fifteen-hour, um, continuing education course with the Texas Animal Control, um, Association. And, um, we also, um, hosted a euthanasia training here at, um, in Alpine. So we had a neighboring, um. Entities come in and, and take that training. So it was a nice thing to do for our royal, our rural commu- communities. So Charles got to take his initial euthanasia training and I was able to, um, take my, uh, recertification. Um, I also attended a, um, Texas Unites Conference and got fourteen hours of continuation, education there. I also was able to speak there. So I was on a panel, um, representing, uh, rural shelters. Um, talked in front of at least over two hundred people, and I'm just not a public speaker, so. There, yeah, there, you guys have been helping me prepare. So, um, that was exciting. I was excited to represent a small shelter, so. Um. That's, that was our training. Um, I just threw this then just for fun. Um, as I said, we're, we're taking, um, trying to make our, our public. Um, our social media and stuff like that, increase that in a positive light. So this was just a little Christmas photo shoot that we did, and we're hoping in more to come with that. Um, over the next year. Um, so last slide here. So, um, what are we up to? So, um, our goal is for twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three is to fill our remaining ECO. Um, position. We just actually recently filled our shelter worker position. So she's actually started yesterday. Um, so we're thrilled about that. We have one more position open. Um, continuing can, uh, continuing education for all of our ACOs. We like to make sure that they get to go out and learn, um, new, up and coming things that are happening. Um, continue the PSAs, um, continue to improve, um, add public education projects. Um, always decreasing intakes, increasing live release ra- rates, including feral cats. Um, increasing patrol, um, continuing working with, um, the other entities in our area, uh, to get span neuter education out there. Um, we have two new burners for our incinerator. We wanna get those installed this year. Um, working on our, uh, rehoming our home-to-home services and, um, just continuing our social media presence. So.
Good goal.
That's it, yeah. Thank you. Any questions?
No, I'm sure you enjoyed the story about, um, the dog from Fort Stockton.
Oh, yes, yeah, we recently, um, we had a dog come into our shelter, um, about six months ago. Um, and they said that they had found her as a stray here in, well, just outside of city limits, but like south of town. Um, these, this couple saw her posted, um, on social media and they, it was her, their dog. And so we got to, uh, they live like closer to Fort Stockton area. Yeah, so you figured it out coming, you know, you went to Walmart or whatever, you come back, you see a dog. Make sure that we are telling everybody in that immediate area that you found the dog there. Um, because these people just didn't know that their dog had made it this far.
Right.
So, um, but we were just all, when she left, because you get attached to them, you know, six months is just.
Yeah, that's a great story.
Yeah, I was happy to share it, so.
All right, Councilmember Johnson, did you have any questions for Jennifer?
No, it's great report as always.
All right, our tourism director, come on up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Rujia, Director of Tourism for the City of Alpine. Good evening, all of you. Uh, so I'm just gonna give you a few highlights. Uh, the, we'll start with data and end with data. Uh, I looked a little bit recently, actually for Adalina, for the governor's, uh, award application she's working on. Uh, they needed some economic impact data. So what I, what I was able to find from the state, this is from the Travel Texas website. Uh, only has been compiled as far as the end of twenty twenty-one. And so I'll just give you a little update as, as of that point. Uh, so the graph I showed you is that at, at the end of twenty twenty-one, local taxes, uh, tax collections attributed to travel spending. Was just under three million for Alpine, uh, and that's local taxes for Alpine. Is twice that state and local. Uh, six million dollars was brought in in tax funds based on travel. Um, the actual spending they estimated for travel in Alpine was fifty point seven million dollars. And that, uh, that provided eight hundred and seventy jobs and twenty-four point nine million dollars in income for Alpine residents. Looking at more recent, uh, research that the state had done, uh, that, that economic data up through the, the fall of last year. Was showing, uh, on all the metrics pretty much that things were back to or just over pre-pandemic levels. In terms of statewide, uh, travel economy. One thing that's kind of interesting is that the business side of things is still lacking. That hasn't completely bounced back. So that suggests that leisure travel, which is what we see primarily, has, has increased over pre-pandemic levels. To make that, that mark, since the business hasn't quite made it. So the difference is maybe with leisure. Um, one question I get asked a lot is how many tourists actually come into Alpine, which is really hard to figure out. But from the occupancy data that, uh, I was able to get from Texas Hotel Lodging Association, my best guess is around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. People. That's really rough. Uh, but that's my best guess. Uh, so Nick, slide two. Uh, last year, I got, I, this is a number that I received in the last quarter. Uh, in the last fiscal year, we did that, uh. Federal grant-based digital program with the state, with Travel Texas, and that program got us ten and a half million impressions. Throughout, through across all the different platforms that we ran with, and it cost us nothing. So I thought I'd just mention that. Um, and, uh, we're planning a paid, uh, partnership with those same people, uh, for early summer, uh, this year. Uh, ad campaigns in the last quarter, uh, the most striking to me was, uh, Heather's gonna tell you about her, uh. Her travel show participation. She went to the state fair and we planned a giveaway as an incentive for people to sign up. For our email newsletter. And so Heather took, uh, this poster to the state fair and we got. Not too bad. We really got pretty good signups. We got about sixty-three in one day, which is really good traffic, uh, in person. Then, uh, we, we figured, well, we've got the prize. Why, let's, let's extend the contest a little while. We put it on the website and did a. Uh, so Facebook and Instagram ad campaign, and it was by far the most effective that we had. And we wound up with one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two email newsletter signups for that contest. The Holland gave us a couple of nights. I put together a couple meal gift certificates and that worked very well. We're gonna follow it up with, uh, the. A future show that Heather will tell you about when she talks to you in a minute. Um. Spotify, uh, hosts our podcast, uh, online, and they do a little end-of-year summary of, of how it did. And so I took this little screenshot that, uh, our listening over the last year increased five hundred and eighteen percent. And the number of streams increased four hundred and seventy percent. Uh, our listeners increased three hundred and twenty-two percent and followers a hundred and thirty-four percent. So that was pretty good growth, though our, I think probably the year before, we only had a partial year, but still, I'll, I'll, I'll take it. Right, that's, that must be it. Yeah, we could win our Texas Travel Award. Um. When the January Texas highways came in, was very pleased to see. I always flip through it to see, hey, are we in there? Um, their cover story actually opened with the spread with the, about a full-page size photo of the desk. So Hancock Hill was the first bucket list travel item in the state for January. And then lastly, uh, visitor dashboard, I'm continuing to learn with. I'll just show you a couple of little index, uh, things. This graph shows year over year, uh, a bunch of different metrics to show kind of the health of the travel economy. Uh, cause this collects, this dashboard collects, uh, physical movement data that's anonymized, matched with credit card spending. So we don't know who any of the people are, but we know people from these places came and were in this location and spent, uh, their. Use their credit cards for these general subjects. And so, uh, December was fourteen point seven percent up over the previous year. So, uh, you see the only months of, for the last year that were down year over year were through the summer. Which is why I'm doing the, the summer co-op advertising to see what we can do about this year, see if that tracks year to year. Uh, and then the last slide, this shows what they call the top ten origin cities, just so you thought you might wanna know. Uh, it, I see this every week, um, and this is mostly, I think, uh, peak, the, the number of people, not, I don't think this is a composite with their spending. Uh, but this particular chart shows Odessa, El Paso and Midland, uh, at the top. But we also see West Odessa as, as another one. So Odessa's even, even more if you combine them. And then San Antonio, Austin, Houston, San Angelo, Lubbock and Fort Worth, which is mostly what we expect to see. Pretty much every Texas metro area, especially the larger ones. We see those as our top visitation. One thing that's kind of interesting to me that when I look at the spending, uh, and this does make sense, we see, uh. Odessa, El Paso and Midland send a lot of people, but the average spend per visitor is lower than, say, Austin. They're nearby. They don't, I think they don't, maybe stay. They're nearby. They don't, I think they don't maybe stay as long. They don't have to spend as much. And so, but that's another thing that I look at is of those markets. How many people versus how much each of them spend? That tells us kind of maybe where we want to focus on the people who send, send us more dollars and fewer bodies.
Think those people have relatives there from that area and that's why they're coming?
Uh, that could, that could well be. You mean the folks in Midland and El Paso? Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, sure.
Well, I think after watching, I don't know if you've seen the Martha tapes. That is going to bring a lot of people to this area. I, you know, after watching that, I was like, we need to be ready because they're coming.
You bet.
What you're referring to, the Martha tapes, it's on Paramount, I think, and it's talking about. A place in Martha where they're all getting away in the country, but even just traveling down south. There are so many people down south, you know, we play music on the porch and they're all tourists now.
Absolutely.
So they're all coming here first and then going.
Yeah. So one of the things that that Zartico dashboard really focuses on in their, their mission and how they communicate to their customers like. Like us is, is trying to make sure that the information they give us, that we can use it to try and encourage people to. Come at the less busy times to maybe frequent areas of the places in the area that are less busy and things like that to. Try maximize the economic benefit and minimize those over tourism issues that thankfully Alpine doesn't have yet. But, but you're right. It's a, if things continue to grow, then it's going to be something we'll need to manage.
And they're all stopping here first, you know, before they go everywhere else.
Sure. And that's what I have for you. Do you have any questions at all?
Thanks, Chris. Councilmember Johnson, do you have any questions?
No, it's, I serve on that committee and Chris has done a magnificent job. For the many years as he's been the executive director.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. All right. Miss Heather.
Hello. So I'll be covering the first quarter of the year or October to December, starting with a brief look at the number of visitors this year compared to twenty twenty one. October twenty twenty two, we had four hundred and seventy two people at the visitor center. That's a significant increase over twenty twenty one. But I would note that in twenty twenty one, we weren't open as many days because we didn't have a part time person at the time. And I actually had COVID and we were closed for like two weeks straight. So when that happens, like we have all the stuff available for visitors. But if the visitor center is not open, we don't have any way for them to sign in and know that they came and utilized the visitor center. So I think that's a large part of that. In November of twenty twenty two, we have two hundred and fifty four people. This is very similar to the numbers that we saw in twenty twenty one. And in December, numbers were way down at the visitor center, a hundred and ten people. After Thanksgiving, I usually have seen a large drop in visitors. We're also closed for ten days at the end of the month due to Christmas and my scheduled vacation. So that makes a difference again. We don't have a part time person there right now. We have a job open. For a part time person and that limits when we can be open because of like time off schedules. My kids are sick all the time. My kids got Megan sick. That's why she's sick. They got her sick at the Christmas parade. She's been sick ever since. Yeah, uh, they're real sweet though. Um, so that's it. Um, oh, the direct mail stuff, sorry, direct mail marketing. We can send you, send out Alpine information all over the country. Through information packets and postcards, Alpine brochures to other travel centers and event bags. In the first quarter, I sent out twenty nine information packets, which those are information that the tourist specifically requests through our website. Two hundred and seventy three postcards. That's just in different ads in magazines where people can say they want more Alpine information. So that we get their address, sometimes their email, and we send them a postcard saying, go to our website. If you don't find what you want there, we'll be happy to send you actual physical material. I sent three hundred brochures to different tech stock travel centers, some other chamber of commerce around the area. I do have a lot of places that are waiting on new information, but we're waiting on printed material and we're getting all new. We had, we just, we've gone through a lot of the like historic tours lately. That's actually a really highly distributed item. Through all of those racks that you see through town and we are waiting on more of those and our just general Alpine brochure. Those are the two things that we send out the most of. I did three hundred and seventy event bags. This is the most bags I've ever done in a quarter. And I think we'll probably continue to do a lot more, getting people to realize that we can provide that for them. Has been a good thing. You know, we, it basically if we know that it's set attendees coming, this, the big one in here was the. Center for Big Ben Studies Conference. I did the bags for every single person that registered for that. So it gives them Alpine information and some of our giveaway stuff that takes them to our website. And in doing that, we can, we can do that. And I'm not physically at those places because we already know who else is coming. So instead they just get everything and. I set up at the places where we don't know who's coming, like festivals. So that's the next thing I'm going to talk about is. Where I went out to several different locations, different festivals and events to promote Alpine in the first quarter. First being the Big Ben Bluegrass Festival. This was the inaugural event here in Alpine. It was held at the civic center. Because there's never been a bluegrass festival here, a large number of the attendees had never been to this area before. That was something that most of them were first time visitors and many of them did come into town several days in advance to explore the area as a whole. So they're already planning for next year. I usually never have a picture myself. I think David Koal took that picture, photo credit. Cause I'm always taking the pictures, but he like was there doing music pictures because he does music all over, but set up the booth for both days. At the Big Ben Bluegrass Festival. So that's one where they sell their tickets, but anybody can walk in the door too and attend. So that was one where it made sense for me to be on site for that one. Next, as Chris talked about, I went to the state fair. Last time I presented to y'all in October, I was just preparing to go on this. I think that it was definitely a good investment. It cost us nothing to be part of the booth. It was through the Texas Historical Trails. So we just volunteered to work the booth for a day basically, and we had the travel expense for me was our expense for that. And you could bring whatever you wanted to promote Alpine for that day. We had tons of giveaways, including the weekend trip to Alpine if people signed up for the newsletter. The most common question of the day was where is Alpine? And that was interesting. Chris very wisely put his lovely map from the website onto the poster as well. And it gave us a way that we could point it out. This also tells us that we have plenty of potential visitors to still come to Alpine and it's showing, it's, Chris and I talked afterwards. The Zartico information is backing that up because we have a lot of people from the Dallas Fort Worth area showing. Interest like through the website and stuff, but haven't taken the jump to come here yet. So we kind of had already targeted going to things in Dallas. And now the, the information that we're getting from the researchers showing that that's a good decision to do that. So we had to have a minimum of two people. So I, I took my husband, volunteered with me to go and. That was good too, because he's born and raised in Alpine. So we were very well represented. We got. Art Walk to give us like some of their T-shirts because they were coming right up in November. So they gave away last year's T-shirts for us. And overall, like the branding was great for Alpine. We had, you know, all of our posters and everything. So. It was in the Go Texan Pavilion at the state fair and we were actually like a couple booths down from a. A drink booth that provided like samples. So people had to wait in the line. And that turned out really good for me. So I got to talk to them why they waited. So. Next, I did just the very next week after the fair, the Saros Job Fair. At the time of the job fair, there actually was not an open position that visit at the visitor center, but I went promoting all the city jobs. And I had several people, like a lot of the students are not necessarily looking for like our entry level positions. And Megan and I talked about that. We knew that was going to be the case, but just to tell them that we are a good employer. You know, consider working for us when you get done with school. A lot of people were asking for keep Alpine beautiful information. So I was able to put them in touch with Adalina. It was a lot of stuff, who people who wanted to do volunteer or like research kind of people. So that's always good to, to, you know, they just want to know where they should start and who they should talk to. Daryl was there. I don't know if you found any police officers. The people next to me were from a different school, but they used to teach in Alpine and I told them to go away and not take any of our teachers. So I don't think they've got any, but the next thing was the Texas Municipal League. The last week of October was busy with that. It was that, obviously it was hosted by you all. But Visit Alpine contributed the swag and information bags for all the attendees. For these, we did do the bags a little bit different because we got some area businesses to contribute also. So Big Ben Telephone gave stuff, Museum of the Big Ben, Saros State University, the Saros Business Development Center. And Megan and I just both started reaching out to people and saying like, hey, what can you give us? I went around and collected it. I did like ninety bags, I think was for that one. So we had the bags and then thank you to the generous donation from Porters. I was able to make the Alpine charcuterie for everyone to enjoy. So it was actually letters that spelled out Alpine and it was devoured. Well, it didn't look pretty for very long, which is why I just have to leave. I don't like it when people start turning up my food. So. I had to walk away. Actually, I had to go get my kids. The next thing I did was the Saros Family Weekend. That was something that I had never done before. I have talked to Saros about inviting me to more of these kind of things. So two things in one quarter is good. I didn't get to do homecoming, which probably was busier than Saros Family Weekend, but homecoming was the same weekend as our pumpkin giveaway, which I have pictures of that coming up. But Family Weekend was one of the activities that started off family, whom was a service project for the participants. And that was where I did thirty bags for them too. That was one, some of them were counted, counted in that total. And then I did the information and giveaways at the tailgate and one of the biggest groups I talked to, they were, it was a football recruiting day. So I was able to talk to those parents about Alpine. Then Christmas in Alpine. So Alpine had three weeks of Christmas events this year. Historic, Historic Alpine again hosted the lighted stroll and they invited me to participate. First thing I want to show you is this, the prep that goes into this was pretty amazing. Eddie's team deserves a huge thank you recognition for helping get the street ready. In great shape for the event. The Parks Department also helped convert some of the vintage Christmas decorations to be used at the old schoolhouse. Eddie also let me and Abby Brandt work candy canes that had used to be decoration in the civic center. And we decorated the street along Saros. See, they were on all the light poles. We also need to thank the Alpine Cub Scouts. They helped fill those hundreds of luminaria bags that were all up and down the street. And I actually didn't get the people on Sunday morning when we did clean up the, and they helped put them out too. The National Honor Society from high school helped with that too. So that was awesome. And like I said, the guys helped, if you want to go to the next one, the guys helped get the decorations ready. We had asked Eddie if we could use the old street stuff and it actually ended up looking really pretty at the schoolhouse. They cut off the old brackets. So those are like a bunch of the big, huge things that used to go up on light poles. And they cut off the brackets and I was able to put the deer up, the step up the ramp there. So it looks like they're taken off and. We had the star, the tree was actually a project during the event. So yeah, repurposing them was really cool. And it fits the, being the second oldest schoolhouse in Alpine to have them there, I think. So it was nice. So actual day of the event. I hosted crafts at the old schoolhouse. Mary Beth, bless her heart from library, supposed to help me, but she got sick like the day before. But Abby with the Historics Association gave me a volunteer and we did hundreds of kids doing Christmas ornaments. So they did like wood ornaments to take home, a recycled ornament from the library. We had them do paper ornaments that we then put on the big tree. We saved the tree. Eddie has it in the yard. So maybe we'll be again next year that was painted on a big, huge box. So it was really good attendance to start off the event. We also did have Alpine musician Neil Trammell. He performed Christmas songs for the kids. So that was the kickoff of that old schoolhouse that I participated in. Now on to use of the pavilion in the quarter and the, the center as a whole. It's a really busy time with community events and one of the biggest festivals of the year. So we were able to make a lot of use of the pavilion. The Great Pumpkin giveaway in partnership with Alpine Police Department, Porter's J and C Bounce House and. Big Ben Parks and Recs for Kids. We hosted the Huge Pumpkin Giveaway. That was the day after TML. So it was like I said, busy October. The attendance on this was great. Since I'm the only one at the visitor's center, they've been parts and recs for kids. They had. Their volunteers come serve the refreshments and they also got the face painter artist to donate her time for just donations to do kids. And there was so many kids wanting their face painted. We ended up with like three people painting faces. Daryl had some intern come up and paint faces. There was kids everywhere. And also Chief LaSoy was able to, his, him and his officer passed out, they passed out the pumpkins. They had high school student council kids out there helping. The officers actually ended up having a busy afternoon because they had a direct traffic. It was so busy out there. They had to stop traffic and. Let people cross the street because there were so many people that were out there on the day of. So they ended up being put more onto the job. And then the big thank you goes to Porter's for the donation of four hundred pumpkins. It was like the perfect number. We ended up with only a couple left. People did take my decoration pumpkins that I already bought. They were like smaller and they checked those off the tables, but it was really good and it was pallet, it was like ten pallets of pumpkins, I think. They came in the day before. We were able to keep them in the alley like closed off and then we put them all out on Saturday morning. So it was great. So Art Walk, again, we had one of our biggest festivals. With the Granada being back in use, we wanted to promote the businesses on our end of Holland and our public restrooms. So, and I talked to you guys about, we wanted to do some stuff with cool art and we were able to make that happen. The cold weather definitely changed Art Walk this year. It was freezing cold and the activities, the outdoor activities. Were probably not as well attended, but our bathrooms were in higher use because, because of the cold. So we were there for that. But once again, Eddie's team helped with the preparations. They did a huge street cleanup on. Third Street, last minute, we needed some fencing to go around our tree back there and. Randy, I called him and he had a, three guys from the gas department out there in thirty minutes, putting a fence up around the, my back corner and had it all ready to go. So it was awesome to have their help. And Eddie's team was cleaning the street because of one of our projects was chalk art on Third Street. The street was all cleaned up for everyone to do chalk art. The Alpine Police, of course, helped us by closing off half of Third Street. We partnered with our neighbor, Amigo Arts Boutique for the project. They provided the supplies. And we had Alpine artist Simon Curry paint the street first and then the public did all their chalk around that. Most of this was done Friday afternoon before it got really cold and we had actually looked at opening the street back up Saturday. But we ended up keeping it closed because there was so much traffic to the visitor's center for those bathrooms. It was better to just have it closed. So even if we don't continue with the chalk art, that's something that Daryl and I should probably address like next year, if we want to go ahead and close that part of Third. Cause there is a lot of traffic in that area. But this is the big project of Art Walk. My pictures do not do it justice. This is the new addition to the visitor's center. Having a live like art project during Art Walk was something that I had wanted to do and it actually saved this tree for a very long time. If the weather had been nicer, we probably would have had more people come out to watch, but chainsaw artist and musician Doug Morland from Fort Davis came out and. The process was pretty amazing. He doesn't sketch or draw or anything. He sees the tree. He visualizes what he wants it to be. He carved that in about four hours. We put the tent over him when it got really bad. And he actually had to come back because of the like spitting rain in the afternoon and do, he burns it at the end to add the detail in. But that's, so unlike most of his work that is movable, ours is actually in the ground. Because we are in a dry climate, it will be years before it rots, but it will still pull water up from the ground over the years. So he said, you have to watch for that. And I'm like twenty years, I don't know if I'll be watching for it, but say maybe somebody will. But yeah, so if that happens though, you can just cut the tree off and we can still save the peace. So we, we paid him to, to do that. We. Have big dreams of maybe doing a mural on the wall behind it. Chris and I have talked about some ideas of something that would be nice for that to be a cool photo op at the visitor's center. I asked on our Facebook, like, what should we name it? Got all kinds of ideas. Most people said Sully, obviously. So maybe we'll name it when we get a mural. But so the other big thing that we hosted at the visitor's center was Christmas in Alpine. Other groups and community members had said that they wanted to host a Christmas parade again, but when no one did, Chief LaSoy and I decided to put together. Kind of a last minute Christmas parade. The, to get ready, I was able to contact a tree trimmer. We actually had a bunch of trees at the visitor's center that have really low branches and we got all those cleaned up. And some of them were on the roof of that new pavilion. So they needed to come off for sure. Porter's, once again, helped. They donated cookies for the parade. And I ate ten gallons of hot chocolate. I hate making hot chocolate, but just so everyone knows, it's a lot of hot chocolates. Um, then the actual parade, we had for really it not being announced till two weeks before, we had amazing participation from the public. Both private citizens and businesses. The Comanche Springs Rodeo Queens led the parade horseback. Most of the time they put the horses at the end. Daryl was like, nope, they're going at the beginning. We didn't have anyone walking, so you can do that if there's no one walking, obviously. Morrison's had their traditional Santa, Alpine PD have Blue Santa. And Rio Grande Electric, if you go back to that slide, had this awesome float where they were actually hanging suspended from like poles. Why they were going down the parade route. So it was really cool. And then once the parade ended at the visitor's center, kids visited with the Blue Santa. We had the refreshments. And then the Alpine Community Band led by Chuck Wilson gave their Christmas concert. It included a candlelight sing along of Silent Night. And again, the Cub Scouts came out, they passed out the candles. And it was very well attended. It was a nice use of the facility for sure. I just want to end with a look at some of the new stuff. Um, I just want to end with a look at some of the new stuff that I did do this year at the visitor's center. We got uh Christmas decorations. Um, we actually got commercial Christmas decorations. In the past, it's just been like whatever we have, but there's actual Christmas, commercial Christmas decorations now. Um, we had several indoor and outdoor Christmas photo ops that like locals came by all December and used them. And I mean, like, I don't have them sign in. They're just there to, you know, enjoy it. So, um, but we did have a lot of traffic for that. Like, the night of that, I didn't have anybody sign in. So again, when you see a hundred and ten people to visitor's center in December, it doesn't count, something like this. Um, same with the, uh, in October with the pumpkin giveaway. You know, we had probably six hundred people in one day and those aren't counted in those numbers. So um, upcoming events. Lone Star Cowboy Poetry Gathering is the first big event of the new year. It's coming up in a couple of weeks. Um, in addition to working on promotion for it, we'll provide attendees with Alpine information and giveaways. Um, the Dallas Adventure and Travel Show is in April and much like the State Fair, this is a co-op with, um, this one's with Travel Texas. And it allows us to distribute Alpine material to thousands of people that attend the show. They estimate attendees, it will be around thirteen thousand people. Um, and Chris and I are working on another giveaway for this. Um, we've talked to um, the Spirits of the West uh people and Viva Big Ben. So about doing some of their tickets. So um, they'll give away like a complete ticket package um with the same thing. Sign up for our email and then we'll pick a winner from that. So um, and speaking of that, Spirits of the West is back for its second year. The new festival is brought to you by Art Walk. They're changing their format a little. They're utilizing the Granada um with a big concert on Saturday. April twenty second is part of the weekend. The tickets for that are actually on sale now and locals do get a discount um if they purchase at Porter's. They get a cheaper price. And their weekend is actually the same weekend as Earth Day, um, which uh, we already started the planning for that. Uh, so it'll be uh held, Judy got permission to use the lot there between Print Co. and the farmer's market. So it'll include the farmer's market on Saturday morning because Earth Day is actually on April twenty second. Um, so, and she's uh doing her dark sky coloring contest again as part of that. And we're gonna again work with Parks and Recs for Kids to help with some of the kids' stuff. Adeline is setting up all the informational booths. So we aren't going to compete with the farmer's market and have like vendors. None of our stuff is like paid stuff. It'll be the gas department has said they're interested in doing like an eight one one booth, the water department about what you shouldn't put down your drains. Um, Adeline has talked to like um, the different uh Big Ben Conservation Alliance and people like that, Dark Skies to, to do that kind of uh information. Um, so that's what we're working on for Earth Day. Um, that will be part of a whole like green weekend, basically with the Spirits of the West that promotes local Texas producers. And then the farmer's market and Earth Day all together. So, any questions?
No, another great report.
Thank you. Absolutely. Okay, last report. Abel, come on up. Hi Abel.
I need a different group next. Okay, uh, current project that we're doing, our lighting project. Um, tentative start date for on construction site is March of twenty twenty-three. We don't have exact dates or nothing set. Uh, contractors wanted all the materials and site before they started, so they wouldn't have to go start working, stop working and then closing, spreading, opening and closing of the runway. Which we would have to do if they needed to stop and go um. But both runways at some point will need to be closed once they get to the cross section of uh, where they intersect. So, and that's, that's a given. We don't have the exact date on that. So we try to put out.
Long-term closure?
No, no. Well, worst case scenario is three weeks, but we're shooting for one. But we still have to give the worst in case, because you never know what, what they'll dig up or what's gonna happen.
So will one be open while one's closed?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, while they're working on the lighting, on the outside sections, yeah. One of the five, two, three will be open. But once they hit that intersection, that's the only time that that section is gonna be closed. And we're trying to give updates to the airport. Uh, the people that are out there, tenants, you know, pilots as much as we can, but you know, we, we still, we will know a little more in February. When we meet next time to find out what exactly the material issues are, I think uh well, the last time it was glass. There was a glass shortage, so something with the lenses, I guess. And then uh, microchips was the last one that we heard. Getting some chips for the, so it could be anything. They're gonna redo the, the lighting for uh, we put some new, instead of the, we have the old bassy lightings when they're flying in, you know, they see the light. Uh, so it's gonna be Pappy's now. We're gonna change it. They're gonna update them. And then the actual runway will have all new LED lights.
We are the last airport to have.
Yeah, bulbs are very hard to get, even our regular lighting is.
Only when they're all going out, we'll be good.
Yes, yes.
And I think my dad installed them. I don't know how many years it's been. Yeah, my dad did the generator too.
Well, he did a good job because they're still. That we actually need, so.
With my daddy.
And in fact, for, for the other runway that's not getting the lights, we're, we're actually gonna have to salvage the bulbs from that one to use on the other ones, because those are old. No, yeah, so only getting one runway. That's all Tech Stop would, would pay for this time.
Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So we gotta save up some money for the next one. Infrastructure gets. Uh, the next one shows a transient traffic for the la- uh, since September, you know, goes down in October, November, December, people start coming out more. You know, little hunting starts up a little more with the ranches. And uh UPS still does contribute a pretty good amount for regular traffic for that. Next one is uh fuel sales with uh jet fuel and avgas and jet fuel will always be in our high high dollar one, you know, or best seller, I guess you could say. Even though avgas could cost more, the best seller is still jet fuel. And you can tell the differences quite a bit, which is kind of odd, because if you see the our visitors in November were lower. But the gas, the fuel was higher. So you just never know how it's gonna hit. Or when they're gonna want fuel. Maybe our prices were lower that month, so everybody waited to fuel up here. And uh, next one is a fiscal year of fuel sales in uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Was our low, that was a COVID era still, because this is a fiscal year. Excuse me. And um, and you, and you can see it jumps up twenty twenty-one and it's still climbing. So we're hoping to keep that going. Next slide, this was a, these are planes that came in from the Department of State Health Services to do the rabies vaccination. They come in once a year and they drop uh bait for coyotes, boxes, anything else. Happens to pick it up and eat it. They use a, well, they arrive a few days ahead of schedule, so, but that, I mean, they their flights, anytime they fly out, you know, you come back, put a hundred gallons more gas, which is about six hundred dollar sale each time. So they had four planes going for the day. So it was a good, it was a good couple of days. And the next one is a picture of the that was the last project, the seal coating, the color, you know, they, they repainted, re-struck it. So we, they finally came back to do a, an aerial shot to, for their books to show the completion of that.
Do the pilots like that?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, they can tell a lot more. On the ground, we're just like, wow, it's, looks funny. Yes. So, we do get compliments on it. Okay, that's it. No questions.
Councilmember Johnson?
Oh, the same. It's another great report by Abel.
Okay, before we go into public hearings, we're gonna take a five minutes. All right, public hearings. Number one, public hearing concern and action item. Number two, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding an application for a replat to allow applicant Dawn Cadden to divide one lot into two. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Moving on. Number two, public hearing concern and action item. Number three, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding an application for a replat to allow the applicant John Scott Turner to combine lots on the subject property. Anybody here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Moving on. Number three, public hearing concern and action item. Number four, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding an application for a replat to allow the applicant Kelly De Prado to separate lots or sell. Anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to consent agenda, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains three items. Item one, approval of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the excused absence of Councilor Johnson, Johnson from the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting. Item three, approval of first quarter twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three investment report.
Okay, I need a motion. Okay, I need a second. Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, and Councilor Johnson, all unanimous. Moving on to information or discussion items. Number one, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That's discussed plans for the possibility of paving up to twenty-six additional city streets utilizing an outside vendor. If y'all remember uh Eddie with the streets gave a presentation at our last meeting. And we're kind of at a standstill. Uh, it's kind of like we moved things in-house, but we were quite, weren't quite prepared. So instead of waiting, uh, I feel that we have money that we allocated for this year. So I am wanting to uh get permission and to go out for, what is R P S?
R F P.
R F P. Uh, for a paving of streets, uh, that would be down with an outside vendor. Uh, the streets that we are looking at.
So in your black folders, there's actually information that has been provided by the mayor and by Eddie Molina. I had to email at the request of Councilor Rodriguez to kind of say, hey, you know, this is what Eddie had prepared and was looking at. And then Eddie took it and, and ran with it and tell you what he thought was the most important to pay. Um, the mayor did evaluate each of the roads as well. Um, you guys kind of have an idea.
So there's, it's talking about one to two blocks north, Fourteenth Street from West Brown Avenue to West Eagle Pass. And that one is approximately twenty-one thousand seven hundred square feet, right?
Yes.
The amount on that is seventy-three thousand six hundred and seventy-two.
And that's the quote coming from one of our vendors here.
Right. And then we have another quote for two point five blocks, which were from South Seven from Diego to the railroad and that cost is ninety-two thousand two hundred and eight.
That's to give you an idea of what it would cost to pay just those sections. Eddie's suggestion was, is he, he wants to, and this is allowable, it's part of our policies, is the two hundred and something thousand that was set aside for his seal coating, that he would split it, use a hundred for seal coating and then a hundred for actual paving. So it's kind of giving you an idea of this is what it would cost to stay within that hundred thousand. Do we not have to put out to other vendors? We do. So, so that's just to give you an idea. Um, state procurement law does, and this is my biggest, like, just follow the state law. Um, state procurement does require that we go for an R F P on anything over fifty thousand. And it's not a project, it's actually a vendor. So if we use a vendor and we hit that four hundred and, or forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, the purchasing has to stop and we have to stop for an R F P. So projects like this, it gives you an idea that, okay, this is definitely an R F P project. Um, we would submit an R F P, um, because our state requirements also require, because it's a paving project, which is construction of our streets. Um, there would have to be a payment or performance bond um provided as well for this project.
And the vendor provides that?
Yes. And that was outlined in the last R F P and, and everything was in compliance.
And how much time do we give to, to get these in?
So it typically takes a month. Um, so it's not for them to respond. It's, we're required to provide so many weeks of notification. Um, we don't have a daily paper, so you know, we have the two weeks to get it into the paper, um, so that it has the fourteen particular days. We may not use the website. We do, but our current reg- uh legislation, which they're trying to change, says we have to use a, a, a paper. But if it changes in the future, newspaper would become. So we have the advertising, um, we allow for a question period. Um, and then we get all of those. We open them um in-house and then we present it to you like we did last time. These are the people who have bid. Um, some will bid high, some will bid low, um, and we make that decision based off of our budget.
So, the R F P, do we automatically have to go with the lowest or can we look at performance type of materials or any, I mean, or do we automatically have to take the lowest?
The way we currently have practiced is the lowest. Um, I've actually been working on a purchasing policy. It's kind of been an up and down, Rod had helped at one point, where we can outline that we don't have to go with the lowest. But because our president's has been, we go with the lowest. We also try to go within our budget. The proposal that was presented to the county is for over twenty thousand for the year. That's to collect all of their taxes. I hope they collect more than what they're paying from all of the entities, all the short terminals that aren't paying, but it also provides platforms in order to pay. The big thing when you look at the county that I really want us to be aware of is they have a software in-house for their accounting that can manage the communications we do not. So part of their agreement with the county is that they can do online payments, and they can, and it will tie up with the software, and it will, you know, register everything, our county's software can do that. So there'd still be a level of manual entry. We are aware of short-term rentals that are not in compliance, we know there's companies that still need to register. I don't know what portion would be the city, I don't know if, you know, twenty-eight thousand is going to be what we have to pay because we're, you know, we're a condensed population. I asked Chris to stay, to kind of give you guys a little bit more background on it as well. I feel like this could be an opportunity.
Well, I know, and I don't even know if we need it. I just know that it was offered, it was said, and I thought, you know, if we do need it, even if we did a one-time, what's out there? We don't have to do collections and stuff through them, we could just see what's there and see if that matches what we show.
And we can.
That's what I was thinking.
We can change it so that we only get a little portion, not the full.
We don't have to have their whole service.
I think they have eight or nine scopes that they're, that they're going to fulfill for the county. But we know that the county is really struggling with.
Yes. Well, the question, the biggest question in my mind would be, since they have this software and all of the, of course, such a suite of different services.
Right.
And so my question for you guys, definitely for Megan, Geo, would be, which part of it do we really, are we most concerned about? Well, because i-if it's, because the first piece is the scans, and they tell you what the properties are. And as far as I know, they don't generally, and it'd be interesting to know if this one's different, they don't generally actually give you, like, here's the owner, here's their address to send them the compliance letter, it's, here's the number, they can tell you kind of where it is, but you've got to then do quite a bit of legwork to piece it all together. But AirDNA is another one that does a similar thing, and so kind of already on the table as well is a co-op partnership with Marfa and Fort Davis, where we could split that cost three ways, and so that, again, there's multiple options, so we could see.
Just something, yeah. They started bringing it up, and they approved it, and everybody was excited, but see, none of that was ever said.
Yeah.
That they're not going to tell you that I own three Airbnbs and get the addresses, you know, that was, that was how I assumed it should work.
And this one might.
And it may.
Yeah.
I don't know, because that wasn't discussed.
But I can follow up with Robert and see what they're really putting on the table, and then compare that with.
Being involved in it, him and Julie, and they'll be able to give all the particulars. I just wanted to let everybody know that that's fixing to happen in Brewster County. If we think we're needing it, we can utilize it, and if we don't, throw it away, it's not, it's not earth-shattering.
Understood, Airbnb's south Philly.
Yeah.
It'd be wonderful if you could get information on that and the one in Marfa.
Yeah, you can, as I understand it, because.
I can give you another job.
They're mostly scraping the platforms, you know, the Airbnb website and VRBO website, and so that's how they know that these are the ones that are listed. But it's automated, so they're getting better information than we could just do in manual searches, you know, on the website.
Tried to book several Airbnbs, and I, just to narrow down.
Exactly, yeah. And these, these ones, they'll show you kind of on a map, kind of where they all are, so you get, you're pretty good, you get a pretty solid count of the number of people doing business in the area and kind of where each property is, but that doesn't necessarily tell you for sure exactly which building it is, and then tracking down who owns it, and.
Well, I think the county's going to rely on the good neighbor buddy system, because these people are tired of knowing that they are being, that's being collected on their rent and not on the people across the street. That's what has initiated all of this, and I don't know that we have that problem now.
Oh, no, our title tales came out first.
Like I say, if it was an exorbitant amount of money, absolutely not, I'll go against it, I won't vote for it, but you know, if it's doable and we think we need it.
Yeah, and that's the conversation, that's the conversation to have, and I think it's, it's probably a good time, since we've had enough of a window of time, like, I've kind of been tracking it based on, you guys get a pretty steady stream of, or trickle, let's say, of the requests for permits, you know, the special use permits at the meetings, and that to me says, well, you know, it's working, but we haven't had an explicit sit-down and say, okay, where are we at now?
Right.
And I think that conversation's working.
And that was the only reason, and when, and the judge said, you know, I think we could piggyback, and we could even possibly just do the city also, when they do that initial look at, look at, a looky-loo, and if Eddie wanted, and it was not very much money for the looky-loo. Hey, I'd like to look at it, wouldn't you like to see who's really out there? And we might just make twelve or fourteen dollars off of.
And Geo was all traded for one, and then when he got the ticket price, he was kind of like, wow.
That's what I'm saying, so if they're willing to let us piggyback, and we're only utilizing, if it's eight, if it's eight things they're going to do for them, we just want one A, might not be very much money, might be worth doing, just to look, just to see what we're looking at, and I'd say if it's not though this way, I wasn't sure, I just wondered if I had to know, that's been talked about, and that's what the county's fixing to do.
I think it would be great as the county liaison to have that conversation with Greg, if, I don't know if they've signed their contract.
I think they have, I don't know that.
Ask the, because it'd be the county, and ask them if the county was to add that feature where we look at the city, what would be the additional expense?
Right.
And then is it something that we can aid in?
Maybe they would like to give it to them, so that'd be nice.
Nice gesture, yeah.
That's really a valid thought on it, I don't know enough about it to come in and give y'all a real good presentation, I just know it was talked about, and I thought, well, I wanted everybody to see it. And just to know that that's what they're fixing to do, the county is going to benefit from it. If it's not going to benefit us, go, go and do a city one, and we'll split it a third.
And there are lots of organizations and companies.
Oh, it's a booming business, from the sound of it, I don't know what they're doing, obviously something.
A software like that would be super helpful, because right now, it's me doing all the audits and trying to find new properties, and it consists of me, oh, I have that one just from my, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It would be very.
This is what's happened with our water pipes, see. Somebody knew where they all were.
Well, it's fun at times.
And now they're dead, and you better start writing that down, gee, I'll get that in a note, but I'll bring you a spiral note. Seeing the picture on Airbnb going, oh, yeah, that house is on, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like there's a couple of good conversations that.
I'll visit Julie tomorrow in the morning, just ask her, you know, what's, what's the possibility, are y'all done with it, and if they are, see what, see what these towns are doing, maybe, and if we even need it.
Yeah, and I'll get with Megan and Geo, and we'll have that conversation about, what are our processes, what are the pain points, what, you know, what do we need help with, if anything?
Trying to spend money, but if we can make some money, and it's not fair to me, now that is not fair. If I'm, if I'm collecting money and having to pay it, and like I said, my neighbors not have to, I, that's, that's theft to me, I just don't think that's right.
Well, it's also understanding that this money wouldn't come out of our general fund or utilities and things like that, this would be hot funds, I'm covering that expense.
Well, then, let's.
But I know they spent twenty thousand to get five thousand.
Well, I agree, see, if it's not worth it, it's not worth it.
Those are just my thoughts. Thank you. Any other?
Thanks, Chris.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Jerry's still awake, are you still awake, Jerry?
I only stay awake to listen to your comments, Judy.
Well, I'm glad I mentioned it.
Y'all, let's move on, it's getting late. Action items. All right, action item number one, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two dash zero one, and ordinance recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, amending the Alpine Code of Ordinance, establishing chapter nine annexation, adopting an ordinance providing for additional annexation requirements in addition to those prescribed by state law. In light of past concerns, the planning zoning is recommending and asking that the notifications go out during the annexation process within the first, I believe, two hundred feet of where the property is being annexed.
A letter sent via mail, so.
Yes.
So we did ask the chair be present, and he was, and I'm not sure what happened, it looked like he had to run out, so, you know, to kind of talk, speak to the reason, and he was the one who initially said, oh, yeah, let's put this on the agenda, so.
All right, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, dear Doc.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, more discussion?
So we didn't do any, wait, so he, until he. Or is there anything that he's going to add to this, to what Megan already told us?
I think he would just speak to, you know, his reasoning and the commission's thoughts on projects, it's up to you all.
So this is an additional step over what state law requires?
Yes.
That you would be responsible for performing.
So we're still in compliance with state law, we're just providing additional notification to those within the area of the annexation.
Can we approve the first reading, and then, and then ask that he be present for the second reading?
Yes, but, you know, he defined too that at that point, we would incur charges for posting the publication, you know, because we have to do prior public hearing. I mean, yes, we can do that, but it would be better to adopt it, you know, next time, because then we have those publication fees attached.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Vote. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, and it's unanimous. Okay, moving on to action item number two, city manager.
Approve an application for a replat to allow the applicant Dawn Caden to divide one lot into two lots. The property in question is located at twenty-eleven Peachtree Circle and is legally described as lot six of block one to Alpine West Estates, city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. The property ID of the subject property is three five five nine one, the record of property owner is Dawn Caden. The current zoning of the property is R four Mobile Home District. The zoning classification, if the replat is approved, will remain R four Mobile Home District. Currently, he's trying to split the lots so that he can make them two legal lots for sale.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Action item number three.
Approve an application for replat to allow the applicant John Scott Turner to combine lots on the subject's property. The property in question is legally described as lot thirteen, block A six, Famous Heights Edition, city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, as the same appears in the records on file in the office of the county clerk of Brewster County, Texas. The record property, record property owner is John Scott Turner. The property ID of the subject property is three five five two eight. The current zoning of the property is R two family district. The zoning classification, if the replat is approved, will remain, remain an R two family district. Mr. Turner has combined his lots into one property, currently he does not have any plans to build.
Okay, I need a motion. Okay, I need a second. Any discussion?
This is residential, this is all ready, residential.
Yes, ma'am. But does he have plans to sell, though?
There's no plan.
I spoke to him, and he said that eventually he'd like to build to have a home. He's from west Texas, and he's living further east.
So he's not looking to combine those two and make another dollar store?
No.
And it's residential, right?
I don't think that's sneaking up on us again.
We wouldn't be able to, I mean, it's staying in our. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Action item number four.
Approve an application for a replat to allow the applicant Dawn Caden to divide one lot into two lots. The property in question is located at twenty-eleven Peachtree Circle and is legally described as lot six of block one to Alpine West Estates, city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. The property ID of the subject property is three five five nine one, the record of property owner is Dawn Caden. The current zoning of the property is R four Mobile Home District. The zoning classification, if the replat is approved, will remain R four Mobile Home District. Currently, he's trying to split the lots so that he can make them two legal lots for sale.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Action item number three.
Approve an application for replat to allow the applicant John Scott Turner to combine lots on the subject's property. The property in question is legally described as lot thirteen, block A six, Famous Heights Edition, city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, as the same appears in the records on file in the office of the county clerk of Brewster County, Texas. The record property, record property owner is John Scott Turner. The property ID of the subject property is three five five two eight. The current zoning of the property is R two family district. The zoning classification, if the replat is approved, will remain, remain an R two family district. Mr. Turner has combined his lots into one property, currently he does not have any plans to build.
Okay, I need a motion. Okay, I need a second. Most of them. Any discussion?
This is residential, this is all ready, residential.
Yes, ma'am. But does he have plans to sell, though?
There's no plan.
I spoke to him, and he said that eventually he'd like to build to have a home. He's from west Texas, and he's living further east.
So he's not looking to combine those two and make another dollar store?
No.
And it's residential, right?
I don't think that's sneaking up on us again.
We wouldn't be able to, I mean, it's staying in our. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Okay, action item number four.
Approve an application for a replat to allow the applicant Kelly De Prado to separate lots for the sale. The property in question is located at four oh six and four oh eight East Nations and is legally described as lots eight, nine, block one fifteen, farm in addition to the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas, as per plat on file and envelope ninety-four plat records out of survey forty-two and one oh one, block nine GH and SA surveys, Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is Kelly De Prado, the property ID of the subject property is one two three two three. The current zoning of the property is R two family district. The reason, or the zoning classification, if the replat is approved, will remain R two, two family district. So Mr. Prado has a primary structure, and then she has like a little duplex on that property as well. What is she's asking is that the primary structure become one property, and the duplex become a separate property. The private well will remain with, just so you guys have some information, with the primary structure of the residence, and that way she can sell them independently of each other.
Okay, I need a motion.
Miss Su, move.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Action item number five.
Approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two dash oh one, a resolution approving a letter of support for the Mountain View Apartments twenty twenty-three tax credit application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the purpose of rehabilitation and improvement efforts for the property. The individuals are online, I believe it's Jonathan, if you need to ask additional questions. Just some background, this is different, this isn't a new construction, this is a rehabilitation. These facilities already exist on the northeast, no, northwest side of town, the hallmark of, I'm sorry, guys. east, no northwest side of town, um, the hallmark of, I'm sorry, guys. The Mountain View Apartments, they're wanting to come in and rehabilitate all of their facilities, including adding some additional benefits to their um, residents. Um, I will let Jonathan provide any additional explanations if you need. Um, J D Newsom, who is not here at the moment, was concerned and did reach out. Um, he has visited with them. And they've provided additional information to get that complex back up to where it needs to be.
So John, will all the units be redone?
You might want to have a motion before you start.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I need a motion.
I have someone.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion.
His name was John.
Yes. Hi, hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Um, yes, a- all fifty-six of the units will undergo a, a complete rehabilitation on to like brand new. So I mean, we're really excited for this project because of, um, as Mr. Newsome discussed earlier, um, jail, I work, my name is Jonathan Andrews. I work for Thomas Development Group. Um, um, with my dad, Tom Andrews, and we partnered with jail gray, um, company, uh, who's one of the largest um, management companies of USDA properties in, on New Mexico. As, and they also have, um, um, companies that they manage in Texas. Um, we partnered to submit the twenty twenty-three tax credit application. Um, so it will be a complete renovation of the entire apartment community. Uh, we'll be adding, um, a community building, um, we'll be adding amenities, um, for the residents, um, barbecue, uh, areas and, uh, gathering, um, uh, purgualize, uh, playgrounds as well as, uh, um, one of the, uh, um, topics or issues that, uh, Mr. News- Newsome and, um, us discussed together was, uh, the property was, um, was getting pretty rundown and, um, we, um, going to be adding a security, uh, system as, as well as LED, uh, lighting throughout the community, just giving it a more, um, of presence, uh, and, um, community feel. So we, and working with the, I know the community, uh, the apartment manager, uh, manager has reached out to the Alpine, um, uh, police and is working with them, um, you know, on any issues. And so Mr. Newsome, um, after we discussed our proposal and what we planned to do, felt confident, um, you know, we were on the right track and we're excited because the property does need a lot of work and, you know, that's why Jill Gray purchased it, um, nineteen, and of course we all, you know, COVID and they just, we haven't had a chance to submit an application. Um, the application we're submitting this year, uh, we feel like will score very competitive, um, just due to the, uh, the property was originally built in, uh, nineteen eighty-three, has never, uh, received additional funding. So you get extra points for that. Uh, and we're asking and we're bringing in a non-partner as well. Um, that's going to be, um, a partner in the, uh, general partnership all the way through the compliance period, and we feel like that will take care, you know, and also improve the quality and, um, you know, management for daily operations. And so, um, you know, we're here, you know, and we appreciate opportunity to speak on, um, behalf of the project, ask for your support um, um, on the rehabilitation project because of course the tax THCA, um, the tax credit applications are very competitive. And, um, a commitment of development funding by, um, local, uh, political subdivision as well as, uh, local government support are two important criteria that, um, you know, with this, that support resolution template that provided, uh, we feel that will, um, will be able to submit the most competitive application to, uh, receive an award of tax credits.
Thank you. I think that's awesome. Uh, it, it is needed. Um, as we discussed earlier, you know, affordable housing is needed in Alpine and, and it is, it's nice that you're looking into getting it fixed up.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor.
Any other discussion? Yes, please come on up.
Uh, so I'm sure that y'all who live in that area are aware that uh, Mountain View Apartment has become kind of a nice work, uh, one of our problem areas, and I believe that rehabilitation to it will make it more positive and hopefully, uh, with the management taking better care of it, will take care of some of the tenants. Uh, I'm also curious to see if this is also going to involve the Alpine retirement community, which is owned by the same, uh, business. So that'd be important for the elderly that live behind it to make sure that their apartments are as well taken care of.
Well, I'm hoping that with the security upgrades, it will help because like Daryl says, you know, they are, they're frequent visitors to that property. So hopefully with the security upgrades and maybe better management screening or something, hopefully it will be a better place.
Yes, yes, and the property will have a full-time, the community building, I think, really will tie into, um, you know, changing, um, you know, the dynamics, uh, within the apartment, uh, community. Um, currently there has, there hasn't been, of course, a community building, so there'll be an onsite full-time manager. And, uh, when speaking with the, um, manager, she did say that the maintenance, um, um, every morning is currently walking through the, uh, property to make sure that there's no trash or, um, you know, anything on the ground. So we feel like we do have a great plan in place and, you know, we just like to, um, this, you know, of course, the city, you know, give us this opportunity, um, you know, to show that, um, you know, to improve the quality of living for the residents and, you know, maybe get a positive impact, um, you know, in the surrounding community for, for all of us.
We talked earlier and we do need better housing. Well, thank you for coming out here and taking that. It is a nice work. I've got the sheriff's office twenty years. If Daryl's guys weren't going to the sheriff's work, so maybe you can clear some of that up. Give somebody a nice apartment to go rent.
Right, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Yeah. Okay, so we are on. It's action item number six.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two dash oh two. A resolution authorizing the city to participate in the key Texas beautiful Texas Department of Transportation's Governor's Community Achievement Award Designation Program. Um, the City of Alpine has applied in the past. Um, the welcome to Alpine signs is a result of first place award of the governor's award to the City of Alpine. And in twenty-one, we received third place. Um, first and second come with, um, uh, a monetary amount. We don't actually physically get the money. It's usually a project they invest in our community. Um, so this one is kind of important. We do apply year after year. Um, the only fee to this is the application fee of twenty-five dollars.
Do we have a motion? Do we have second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? If it's right.
She had us on twenty-five.
Yeah. All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Well, that brings us to number ten. City Council member comments. Councilmember Spel.
Ready? Uh, I just want to thank everybody for the reports. Jennifer Heather, Eddie, Chris, Abel, everybody that's been up here. They're all out there working, doing, doing stuff we don't have to do, um, to help our community be better. Um, I'm glad to see Eddie here. You know, I think that your presence here makes, reminds us how hard your guys work. It's one of those out of sight, out of mind. And if I drive on a good road, now I go, I wonder Betty was here. Yeah, when I went to come to come to state, it's like, it's not. You haven't driven out there. Drive out. Oh, it was like a, it was just like a new road, you know, and it was nice. And I have gotten many, many, many emails, texts, calls. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I have too.
So that, that, that's all we want to hear. We know you're out there. Now Abel, on the other hand, you know, I don't know. Now he's gonna close our runways. I'm, I don't know. Thanks Abel, though.
We do appreciate you.
No offense.
Okay, all right. I just want to say thank you too, and thank you for being here. Appreciate you guys. And Jerry, oop, sorry, Jerry.
That's all right, but I'm gonna pass also.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, this brings us to item number eleven, executive session.
Really quick, you know, um, I just recommend that the council do a motion to go past nine P M. if necessary, because our rules of procedure state that that's required, just in case.
Okay, let's do it, just in case. Any emotion?
I mean, that we go past nine o'clock if needed until we finish the matter and executive session.
I need a second.
Sure.
Okay, and we vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Councilmember Johnson, okay, unanimous. I thank you, Gio. So this brings us to item number eleven, executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. The city council reserves the right to convene and to executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting for any postage in an item or to receive advice from attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council recessed into executive session pursuant to section five five one dot oh seven four personnel matters. May I get a motion and a second to recess into executive session? Okay, motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Need a second, okay. Um, any discussion? All right, we are moving into second.
Did you get a vote? I'm sorry.
Vote. Yeah, unanimous. Okay, good. Thank you, Gio. I have a motion and a second to recess into executive session. There was no discussion. We just voted. And we are recessing into executive session at eight eleven P M. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here.
Gio.
Counselor Johnson, can you, uh, join the breakout room? You should have a link asking you to join.
Can I stay in the executive session?
Okay, may I please have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session? Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to a vote.
Um, can you state the time?
Time is nine fifteen P M.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. You needed to take the vote. Yeah, you're right.
That's okay. Um. So we see in none, we will proceed to a vote. If you'd like to vote in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, unanimous? The motion to reconvene into open session passes unanimously. We are reconvening into open session at nine sixteen P M. This brings us to item twelve, action after executive session. May I please get a motion?
Yes, I move for the termination of the city attorney, Rod Ponton.
Okay, may I have a second? Okay, motion fails. Do I have another motion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to adjourn the meeting. Okay, with that, I adjourn.